And we've got a lot to do tonight. So our first order is business is administrative, dealing with the minutes of November 13th. Is there, are there comments about the minutes or is there a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve the minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Fall in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good. So our first case tonight is 99101 Lexington Street.
Not for the public.
Don't you, do you have a mind? I had to turn my backyard into a parking area and I, I share a, could I give you a couple pictures of something? Is that all right?
Could we have your name, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's Mike McDavid.
Okay.
All right. I have a existing non-conforming driveway as I, my neighbor's driveway and mine are right next to each other. There's a fence that separates them down the middle. In order to turn the rear area of the property into parking, because I, I guess I had an illegal space in the front that I had been using, I had to install a four-foot buffer area that as, as I wanted to extend into the backyard and it's pretty tight. So in order to actually get into the back area, I have to drive over the buffer area repeatedly. It's just, it's going to make it difficult in the winters to keep the snow clear and have it not turn into a mess as I, as I drive over it. So I had asked if I could reduce the four-foot buffer to a, a one-foot buffer.
So that's, that's the case?
Yes.
We're talking about three feet of buffer here.
Yeah.
Okay. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, sure. I can be very brief. It's a special permit finding for the extension of the existing non-conforming driveway. The existing driveway is, has no buffer and as a compromise in order, in the area, they're, they're proposing a one-foot buffer rather in order to get the driveway into the rear yard. That one-foot area would be where a mirror would overhang or other areas, but it would also allow some minor landscaping along the fence line still and it would allow him to better utilize the rear yard. And so staff is generally supportive of this, of this. They do have the, they were able to have the driveway into the backyard, but are not able to use it well and staff is in support of this. It's not a substantially greater impact to the neighborhood from a staff perspective and staff recommends conditional approval. One note is that the, the submitted plan is, it's added onto a plot plan in order to clarify what was requested and to show the areas that were open space within the site which weren't shown on the original plot plan. And that, it's a brief staff report, but if you have any questions, feel free to ask. Thank you.
I have a picture if you want to see.
So maybe we may just pass it along quickly.
So it shows, going into the, this two pictures. I have a full-size pickup truck that I use for work and the only way that I can actually get into the backyard and park is to, sorry, back all the way down the driveway, the length of the fence and my tire, that's my tire going through that park because then I have to kind of pull forward. This is what I did to, so I just kind of see when I, when I back down the driveway, then I have to kind of pull forward into that space there. It's the only area that I can drive in. So essentially when, if I reduce the buffer area, instead of having my tires in landscaping, they'll be on a hard surface, which would make it a lot easier in the wintertime.
Any questions from board members?
How many cars park here normally?
Only three. And so my, I have a tenant, he parks on the street during the months when there's no parking ban. So I have a car, my wife has a car and I only allow my tenant to have one.
Yep.
I don't think I could get another car back there anyway.
Yeah, yeah. No, it's the same situation I've got.
I have a quick question. The fence, the wood fence doesn't look like it's much longer for this world.
It, it certainly needs some help and once we figure out, you know, what I'll, if I'll be able to, to do this, then it'll probably all be done at the same time.
Okay.
The fence is technically on my neighbor's property, but I offered to split it with them.
So you have some kind of arrangement with the neighbor for, to repair it when it?
Well, I figured I share it with them and even, I'm happy to split it with them is what I told them. It's been like that for a while. It's not anything to do with the creation of the hard surface in the background and the backyard.
Okay. Thank you.
Any questions in the audience, comments? Yes, ma'am.
Oh, come up to that.
See this picture again.
Libicheau trees for Watertown. I'm just interested in whether this is an overall loss of green space on your property. Do you, and also do you have a, I mean, obviously it's not green space if you're driving on it, but I was wondering, do you have a, do you have a setback from the rear of your property? Is there a green, is there landscaping between your, your parking area and the?
It's 10 feet and it will be landscaped right now. It's kind of bark mulch. I, I used to have a yard in the back of my house, but it's not there anymore.
Uh huh. So you're going to have 10 feet from the back landscape edge to the edge of your?
That's what I, sorry. That's what I, was under the impression.
Yeah, I can, I can speak to, sorry, when you're, try to address the board instead of.
Sorry, sorry. Yeah.
There's a requirement for a 10-foot rear yard buffer and he doesn't have any parking within that, so he would not be allowed to go into that 10-foot buffer. There is also a large tree that he wanted to preserve on the other side of the property. So there is, that is why the shed is staying where it is.
I should have said that. I have a shed that I also use for some work purposes and I, I could move the shed, but I would have to take down an extremely large tree that's probably been there for who knows how long.
Thank you.
Any other comments? As being the case, is there a motion to?
I move that the planning board recommend to the zoning board of appeals conditional approval of the requested extension of the non-conforming driveway as a special permit finding under section 4.06A as it meets the criteria set forth in the zoning ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Fall in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Fine. So you go to the zoning board in two weeks, I think.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Actually, just, just to clarify, it's one week this month. So it's next Wednesday.
Okay. I'll follow up with you on details. Thank you.
So our next case is 28 Nyack Street, represented by council.
Mr. Chairman, board members, Kenneth Lightner representing Arson and Armey Gennekean, who are the owners of 28 Nyack Street. They've owned the property for approximately 17 years. It's a single-family residence in an S6 zone. Presently, they have a second story, but given the gable roof with a shed dorm, everything's been hodgepodge together over time. And what they're proposing to do is to add a second story addition, which is approximately 32 by 32 in round numbers. Part of it's going to enclose a back porch, so that becomes, it impacts the ratios for lot coverage and impervious coverage by about two and a half percent. It's about eight and a half by 18 and a half, about 150 square feet. But what they're doing is that they're bringing more living area to their property. The upstairs presently is about 575 square feet. They're going to add additional 467 square feet, but they're going to convert the house, which is essentially a ranch, into a colonial. They've put a lot of time into it. They've worked with their architect, Ben Ives, who is here today, to align windows. So it really does have the appearance of a colonial. So there'll be four windows aligned on the front facade on Nyack Street with, between the first and the second floors. There'll be a window over the door on, on Nyack Street and they already have the living area there. What they're doing is just coming up with the sidewall, making a gable on both ends. The height of the house is only about 28 feet. They're not using the third floor in any manner. They're going to have eaves at the top of the gable, so they're going to have a pull-down for storage. So they're not trying to overuse the house in that regard. The only thing they're seeking is, they're bringing the, the front facade even with the first floor. It's 19.9 feet. 25 feet is required, so they're looking to continue the non-conformity on that and it really makes a lot of sense architecturally. And since they're covering a portion of a back porch, which was open, they're increasing their lot coverage by two and a half percent and their impervious coverage by two and a half percent and therefore decreasing their open area by two and a half percent. It's 150 square feet. So they've been there for 17 years. They want to continue to live there. They put a lot of effort into this. They've worked extensively with staff on it and I would suggest that it does meet the criteria for a special permit finding. It is in no way substantially more detrimental. It fits in well with the neighborhood and so we do believe we meet the criteria for the relief to be granted.
So we have a staff report, please?
As was identified, the request is for a special permit finding. They initially submitted a document and some plans that put more of the mass over the rear deck, which created a more awkward layout and roofline. They redesigned it and resubmitted it using, taking advantage of the area that they weren't using within the front yard setback. And so with this design, it's a more, a more conventional architectural design that you would see within Watertown's neighborhoods. The setback is five feet closer to the front yard and that's the primary relief that's required as well as the building coverage. The houses on both sides are also at that same line, so from an averaging perspective, it is the same as, it is the average setback for the, for this row of houses from ordinance perspective. Staff finds that this submittal is not substantially more detrimental with the updated design and recommends conditional approval with our standard conditions. Please let me know if you have any questions. Thank you.
So comments, questions from the board?
I had just a few minor clarifications. You said your architect is here?
Yes, he is.
It would be mostly directed to your architect.
Hi, my name is Ben Ives.
So just some minor stuff. We, we got five drawings in a packet here.
Okay.
And I'm trying to determine how complete this set is because the first one says one of three and then the rest of them say two of two. So are?
Yeah, there's been several iterations and, yeah, sorry about that. It's just.
But these are?
Yeah, those are, I'm sorry. Yeah, those are all the drawings that we've submitted.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the full set.
Okay. And then just another typo probably is on the third drawing with the floor plans. It's A003. I think this has got to be a typo, but you've got the proposed first floor plan and two says proposed basement plan?
Excuse me?
Second floor, right?
Yes, it's the second floor. Sorry.
Okay. Better catch them now than later. And then I guess there were some, on the elevation and in the description, I, I'm just not sure if we got enough information to, to make a judgment. There's, like, we don't know if it's all new siding or if it's, the siding's going to matter, just exactly how that works.
I guess we hadn't discussed that. Clearly throughout the, the front and the sides, you would have to re-site it. I guess it would come down to a cost decision that we hadn't discussed yet, just because we're sort of in the early design phase. My recommendation to the client would be to re-site the house. It's currently a final siding. Is it final? And we just haven't gotten to that point of the design process yet.
Okay, yeah.
To specify, yeah.
Just, just trying to figure it out since there's, the drawings were obviously not pricing drawings yet.
Yeah.
So, okay, that, those are just my clarifications. I don't have any issues with the concept.
Okay. Okay. Oh, actually I'll pick up on that, so. And, and like, like Janet, these issues are not, I'm generally in favor of it, but I think there's some more errors that you need to clear out before you get to the ZBA.
Okay.
One of them in particular is, if, unless I'm mistaken, I think you have three non-conforming setbacks. Because according, well, so the front, you're, you're encro, you're, you've got a pre-existing five-foot encroachment.
Yeah.
And then one of the sides, it says, you have nine, well, so you have 10.2 where you need 12 for the left setback. But then for the right setback, it says you have, or the existing condition is 9.5 and then the proposed is 17.8.
I can answer that. On the side yard setbacks, the 10.2 is conforming. The driveway side should be the 12. It's an existing condition. The 17.8 is the distance from the side yard setback to where the addition is going.
To where the addition is going.
Correct. The existing is that showing whatever that is, 9.5 or 9.8.
But there's a bump out into that side yard that's remaining as is.
Okay.
And that's, and that encroaches into the side yard setback, but from a relief perspective, they're not building within that setback because the main house is at 17 feet, you're saying?
The main house, I don't see a dimension on it, but it's within the setback and we're not building over that existing bump out.
I don't see where the 17.8 is on the site plan, though. Like where?
Actually, just, I don't, it's not in the 12-foot setback. On the, on the site plan, it just shows the 12-foot setback. I, we didn't scale out. It's ver, it's showing that it's not in the 12-foot setback, so we know that it's not in that setback. On the, on the A01, 001.00, there's a dotted line that shows the 12-foot setback.
Okay.
So that we, so from zoning, it's not in the setback, but if, if, you know, if you have an issue with the design, it's in other setbacks, but from a relief perspective, it's not in that setback.
All right. I'll, I'll take your word for it. It just, it, I don't see, you know, just usually we see on these site plans, the, the required setback and the actual setback, and I don't see the actual setbacks in this plan. And I think they sometimes look for that at the ZBA, so I.
Well, there should be a plot plan as well.
Yeah. I didn't see it on the plot plan either, to be honest. Does the plot plan show? I see, I see a 10.2 and I see a 9.5.
If there's a plot plan that's stamped and registered, we just scale it to check. So, so like anything is, is measurable on the plot plan, so if, I mean, we, we can tell on the plot plan that it's not within the setbacks and it's an existing structure, so the walls are where they're going to be and it's going over. Other than that one-story bump out, that's staying exactly the same and they're adding a second story over the main footprint of the house and not that bump out. So, so that's what, you know, we verified it that way, if my, if I recall. Here's the plot plan.
Of course, it says. Are you saying that that's 17.8? Is that right?
I think so. Yeah. Okay. I just, the way it's done in the table, I think, is a little confusing and I, seems to me it might lead to some questions at the ZBA, but.
It shows, it shows the existing on the table and then it says proposed and that just addresses a second story on that, on that side.
Okay. I'm just saying that when it says 17.8 proposed, but I don't see 17.8 anywhere on a plot plan or the site plan, it's a little confusing.
I understand that, yeah.
That's the point. And then just another thing that, that I noticed is, is you might want to fix. There's that, the elevation has that line through it on, I think it's on A005.00.
Yeah.
You have this line that says new building area on one side and existing house on the other side. I think you have them backwards on, on the bottom right, the proposed left elevation. I think you're, the, the new part would be the small one and the existing would be the other one.
You're right.
So I think that's it. Just a couple of things you might want to clean up.
Thank you. There's also one area, because this is sort of considered a dry run a little bit for the, the ZBA, the, there's, I should maybe clarify, over the rear entry, we're proposing to modify the gabled roof to be a, a straight roof, otherwise it would sort of drain into itself. So if you look at proposed rear elevation on A005, it's very minor, but I thought that might be something that you were bringing up earlier when you said there was, and then you compare that to A004 drawing.
Yeah.
Two. So the rear entry currently has a little gabled roof. We're going to extend that roof straight up to the side of the house because otherwise it'll be draining into itself. But it's also work that's done within the setback. I mean, I mean.
Outside. Outside the setback.
You'll need to verify if it's in the setback.
Outside the setback, yeah. It's not.
In the setback.
It's not happening in the, in the setback, but it's just a small roof area that I didn't want to.
I get it. Yeah. I know, I see what you're doing. I think that's it. Thank you.
So the only question I have is for the staff. This is a, a single-story area of town, kind of, and this is going to be one of the few two-story buildings?
It's, from a zoning perspective, it's in a 2.5-story area of town, but from the development pattern in this neighborhood, there is a lot of one and one and a half-story houses. There also have been a number of projects that have come before the board throughout that, this area that have added either a larger half-story to the second floor to be usable or they've added a full second story. And so that's part of, because it's in the setbacks, it's part of the board's review is if, if you feel that the mass is, is substantially more impactful, then you can suggest changes to that.
So you're comfortable with that, though?
Well, the zoning allows to, there is houses on the next block that are two stories, but there, this particular block does not have a lot of two-story construction at this time, so.
Fair enough.
It's, it's up to the board to make the decision on that.
Any other questions from the audience?
Can I point out one more error you might want to fix that I noticed? On the site plan, you have all your side setbacks listed as side. It's like the front is listed as side and the rear is listed as side on A001.
Okay. Yes. Sorry. Thank you.
So I think we're ready for a motion, are we not?
Yeah, yeah. Okay. So I move that the planning board recommends to the zoning board of appeals conditional approval of a special permit finding under section 4.06A for constructing, a second floor addition within the pre-existing non-conforming. addition within the pre-existing non-conforming front setback, and increasing the pre-existing non-conforming building coverage, meeting the criteria set forth in the zoning ordinance.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there a second?
I'll second, sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
The zoning board in a week, and there were some suggestions to kind of clean up the documents, so you don't have this kind of detailed question.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. So our next case is 122 Grant Avenue.
Hi, good evening. My name is Bonnie Derr. I'm the owner of 122 Grant Avenue, and I visited with you folks back a number of months ago, and I'm coming to you again tonight, just for some, for some potential approval for some modifications to our prior drawings that we had submitted and received approval for. I came forth to you folks in regards to renovations to 122 Grant Avenue, and a good majority of them is planning for some future for my significant other, who unfortunately has some significant health issues. And the project has had to shift gears from one architect to another when various things came to light as we started to proceed forward, in the fact that the prior drawings didn't meet ADA regulations for floor coverage for a wheelchair, and being able to maneuver the spaces freely and clutter-free. And that speaks to the entrance into the rear portion of the house. And then, there were some other things that came to my attention, very gratefully from my architect Andrea, in regards to, once we enter the front of the house, once you come up the front walkway, in the prior drawings, there would be nowhere for one to sit and rest and catch their breath, be free from the elements if it was either raining, or snowing, or what have you, because it was just a walk-up and then just front entrance into the house. With the suggestion of an addition of a small porch that would allow for, for someone to get their bearings, once getting up the front steps and being free from the elements. Additionally, being able to get outside from various different spaces. One of the proposals is also, which, I'll revisit the front entryway in just a moment, but there is also a request to putting on a balcony from our proposed bedroom. Again, allowing my significant other to be able to get outside and enjoy fresh air when he potentially may not be able to get any further than that space. So, sorry.
So, your documents are very clear, so. Yeah, I think you made the case, the documents, I think we all find were very clear.
Okay. Sorry, I'm just trying to, I realize there's an audience and what have you, so, I'm just looking to increase the lot coverage a small bit. I think it's 1.2%, but it was something that, when I met with the staff and such, that I needed to come back to the board for those clarifications, so. Thank you.
So, do we have a little staff report?
Yes, as identified, the, the changes adds additional set of closets, or additional set of closets adjacent to the garage, and expands the mudroom in order to meet ADA. The, on the first floor, there was also the expansion of the porch within the front yard setback, so the original opening is not in that location. And then, on the second floor, it was identified that there'd be addition of that second-floor deck, which has a covered area underneath it, so that would be an expansion as well. Staff finds that this is, because of the placement of this lot and the size of the lot, that the changes and the increase is not substantially more detrimental than the existing condition, and recommends that the amendment to the previously approved special permit finding be allowed as submitted. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, thank you.
Any board of questions?
I mean, it is very clear, so.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Any audience questions, comments? In which case, we should move along.
Okay. There was, there was letters and signatures submitted and support from your neighbors and-
Oh, thank you. Thank you for sharing that.
Yeah, you didn't know? Oh, yeah, there's, yeah, you got a lot of support.
Thank you.
So, I will therefore go ahead and move that the planning board recommend to the zoning board of appeals conditional approval of the requested special permit finding amendment under section 4.06 for an increase to the building coverage, and a first and second-story addition rear balcony, increased front porch, within the non-conforming front yard setback, meeting criteria set forth in the zoning ordinance.
You trailed off at the end.
What are the zoning ordinance?
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
So you go to the zoning board in a week.
Okay, thank you.
So, our next case. Is 164, yeah, 164, 166 Main Street.
You guys ready? Hi, I'm Eric Brown, Prelate Chulinski Associates in Cambridge. Thanks for having us tonight. We're gonna try to be brief. We know you guys are busy. We think we have a very complete submission. A lot of information is there, with the help of staff. I think we have all our Ts crossed and Is dotted. We've had meetings with staff, we've had feedback, we've had neighborhood meeting, developers' conference, and so, we think we're in good shape. So this way, we'll be brief, and then if you have questions, we'll certainly get into more detail if you like. So, the-
So, let's see, we have new packets that follow exactly what you're doing.
Yes, we have the exact slides that we're presenting there. So, the site, of course, is right outside that window, across the street, everybody's familiar with that. Some views of the site existing, and some photographs of buildings around us, the town hall, and the back. I don't want to go too fast, but I'm, okay. This is an important drawing, diagram, I think, because it shows buildings of similar scale and height, and, in some cases, design style, that we, we wanted our building to fit into the neighborhood and feel like it was a part of a collection of buildings. And so, we looked at some of the mid-century modern buildings, the town hall, the library, some other residential buildings to the west, and wanted it to feel like a part of that collection of buildings. So this is a view showing our building on the street, superimposed, looking towards the west. This is a view looking towards the east. Page six. Okay, so, I'll briefly describe the floor plans. The ground floor is basically parking, a small commercial space, a shared lobby, vertical circulation, and we have some of our open space, and our landscape architect is here, will talk more about some of the landscape improvements. One thing I'll note is that we set the building back two feet from the property line to help the transition from the building on the east to the building on the west of us, so that we start to step back just a little bit to ease that transition. And that also enabled us to put in some benches and allow users to experience the public way a little bit nicer, well, certainly nicer than it is now, but give an opportunity to have some open space in the front. So, very simple plan, mix of studios, ones and twos. You'll see in another diagram that the building, based on the form-based zoning, steps back on the residential side, and so, we have outdoor terraces on three of the floors. Roof plan, from above, also shows those terraces, shows how we've designated areas for solar, and this is preliminary, but we kind of understand where our condensing, condenser farm can go in the center, and we'll also have elevator overrun, and, just an overrun, not the elevator going up there. And one stair will go to the roof for maintenance. So this drawing is basically showing some of the data. Shows that form-based zoning in the back. Shows our floor-to floors areas. This drawing starts to describe the outdoor amenities. We're gonna have some nice decking materials and planters on those terraces. And again, Kate will get into some of the planting materials that we have in the rear for open space, and this also kind of shows the commercial, the commercial building has zero setbacks, so, you know, they're right up against the neighbor, and then we have our other setbacks near the residential zones. I'll just point out, which I'm sure you know already, that we are in compliance with all of the dimensional regulations for the project. We have no variances or setbacks for height or FAR or anything. We are committed to lead certifiable, silver certifiable project, and we have a preliminary checklist that we've submitted, we're working on it. You know, things may change a point here or there, but obviously, it's a requirement of the town, so we're gonna be meeting that requirement. The owner's been in contact with a solar company to help us analyze how that's gonna work. It's kind of a new regulation, so we're figuring it out a little bit as we go. So, into the design a little bit now. So we felt like this building should be a quiet building, a simple building, not be visually competing with some of the more important buildings in town, the town hall and the library. So we're sort of just using quality materials, nice proportions, quality detailing, and letting the building, you know, just be a simple, quiet building. Blended red brick, wood, pre-stained wood, some fiber cement panels to break up the facade. We'll show you on the side and the rear elevations how that works, and some, a little bit of metal along the canopy in the front. And we also have a wood screen that's screening on the right, the transformer, and then we have a new fence in the rear, which will also be a wood fence. So, some befores and afters, before, after. You can see how the brick turns the corner, and then as we get back towards the residential neighborhood, we're switching to fiber cement panels in the rear, and combined with light gray clambered. Here you can see the screen by the transformer, and this area here. A view looking to the southwest. See our commercial area, our commercial space. Front elevation. Sides. And the rear. We've included these tonight, we, you know, we've had a meeting with the housing group and come to agreement on which units would be affordable, exactly which sizes, which units will be accessible. This has all been worked out ahead of time. So I'm gonna have Kate come up and talk a little bit about the plantings and the landscape design.
Hi, my name is Kate Orincheck. I'm the landscape architect at Catherine Orincheck Landscape Architecture. The plan is, the open space for the project is broken up into two areas, one along Main Street, and that's a more public, open-space area, and then there are two smaller spaces toward the rear of the property on the south side. I'll talk first about the open space on the street. So, we have, as Eric said, we have a series of benches and planters. You can see, perhaps, in purple, where the three benches are identified. Oh, oh, thank you, perfect. The benches are here. The screen that Eric mentioned is this red line here that screens the transformer from view. I should have said from the beginning, there are two existing street trees, and we are proposing to add a third. So, currently, there's an existing tree right here, for example. We will relocate it once we reconstruct the sidewalk and such, so we are intending to preserve the two existing street trees, and as I say, add a third. The street trees would be red maple. There is one existing red maple, which is this guy here, and this one would be a proposed red maple. And this is an existing tilia cordata, a little-leaf linden. Toward the back of the property, let me just point out, this kind of faint blue line is where the fence would go. And then, toward the back of the property, where the other section of open space is, we have a larger open space on the left-hand side of the plan, and a smaller open space on the right-hand side of the plan. On the left, the space is divided elevationally between a lower elevation at the, at the elevation level with the parking lot, and that is represented here. There is a retaining wall that divides the space, and then at the upper part of the wall here will be, we're proposing to add five canopy trees. And on the lower level, we have a ground cover, pachysandra procumbens, which is Allegheny spurge, on the ground plane with bottle blush, bottle brush buckeye shrubs, shown here in the darker green kind of shade. So that's all green, and then we have two vines, one in the corner here, where the two walls intersect, and another vine planted here, adjacent to where the secondary bike storage facility will be, right over here. So that the wall will be camouflaged somewhat by the growth of the vine, which is Parthenocisus quincifolia, which is Virginia creeper. On the upper part of the project, I mean, above the wall, is, as I said, shade trees, which are carpinus caroliniana, which is an American hornbeam. And then, on the, whoops, I pressed too much. On the right-hand side of the open space is just a little notch in the property, surrounded by retaining walls, that will have the ground cover, an evergreen, it's partially evergreen, semi-evergreen ground cover, also the same one, called pachysandra procumbens, Allegheny spurge, and then there will be some planters you'll see in red, that will have seasonal planting, that will change out for the seasons. And that describes the planting and landscape in general. I will switch to the next page. This describes more in imagery what the plants would look like, so the red maples are on the upper left-hand corner, very typical street tree. The one in this tree here is a tilia cordata, that's the one that exists, that's a photo of the exact tree. The tree that I'm proposing for the upper terrace in the back is this carpinus caroliniana. It gets some beautiful bracts on it. It is a tree that will get to approximately 35 feet or so, wide and tall. And then, for shrubs, this is the bottle brush buck- And then for shrubs, this is the bottle brush buckeye, which is a flowering shrub, a dwarf version, that will grow nicely in this shady condition down on the lower level. This image here shows you what the ground cover will look like. This third image in the center shows you what the vine will look like. It gets a beautiful red fall color. And these are just ideas about what possibly the planters could look like in the way back on the back right-hand side. The front of the property will have cast-in-place concrete pavement. There's an area of permeable pavers underneath the zone where the bicycle parking is against the retaining wall on the south side. And the last image shows what exists today in terms of streetscape materials, and we're going to keep in, stay in keeping with that same image. So all of the plants are native to the area and are selected to be able to survive in these environmental conditions and provide seasonal interest to the residents.
Thank you, board members. Robert Michaud, transportation engineer with MDM Transportation Consultants. The project was evaluated for both access, circulation, and parking. It's documented in our study dated to November 5th of 2019. And the context for the property is important to understand in that it is very transit-oriented. It interacts well with existing pedestrian systems along Main Street, and has in fact had an approved TDM program that we hope will encourage lower vehicle ownership and use through time. And this map indicates where certain bus stops and public transportation systems are in the area, as well as the proximity of the Charles River Greenway. The project itself is not a high-generating project. Thirty-four units and just over 1,000 square feet of commercial space is estimated, using standard, unadjusted industry standard trip rates to be less than 20 vehicle trips per hour. Very modest, not, doesn't rise to the level of actually having a material effect on traffic flow. The focal point for this type of project is parking, because parking, of course, relates to how much traffic would be generated, and to the extent we can minimize that in accordance with UVA law provisions, the better. So what's shown here is an assessment of the parking component of the project. The zoning, unadjusted, would require some 37 parking spaces for the project. Because it's a mixed-use project, the provisions of zoning would allow for 34 parking spaces to be provided, understanding that the commercial component would not be active during nighttime hours when the highest parking demands for the residential component would occur. The provisions of the zoning bylaw also have, allow up to a 25% additional parking reduction in cases where a TMA, TDM program has been established. In this particular case, the applicant has committed a number of measures as part of an approved basic TDM plan that includes a membership of the Watertown TMA Bike Repair Station. They exceed the minimum number of required onsite bicycle parking spaces, and they're making substantial pedestrian enhancements along the frontage that include the wider sidewalk systems, as well as benches along that quarter. Those combined efforts indicate to us that the applicant should be allowed and granted up to the 25% credit on parking. What the applicant has done is actually only assumed up to a 20% reduction in parking, and has applied that to the residential parking component, which would ordinarily be one space per unit. So what's provided is 30 parking spaces, of which three are commercial, 27 are residential, which gives us a ratio of just under the one per unit that would otherwise be required through the zoning ordinance. This diagram called shared parking analysis indicates that with the assumption of up to a 25% demand reduction, that the peak demands on the site would be at night at 26 of the 30 spaces, and would drop between 35 and 50% during the daytime hours, when folks are actually not likely to be parked there. So that the daytime parking demands are closer to about 19 of the 30 parking spaces. So in conclusion, this project is not a high-generating use. It will have appropriate access and egress improvements that would support the parking below the structure. We anticipate that that will be outfitted with appropriate audible warning devices for pedestrian safety reasons, and there are a number of pedestrian accommodation improvements and bicycle amenities that will be provided as a function of the project, all of which tie into the TDM plan, which has been approved as part of a basic TDM plan. Glad to answer any questions following the presentation.
So before you sit down, what about visitor parking?
Yes.
People come for dinner, come for whatever.
Yep.
But in the evening, when most people are already parking there, what do you, how's that handled?
The parking demand, the zoning ordinance contemplates visitor activity as part of the ratio, the one per unit. The zoning ordinance also acknowledges that in cases where the TDM comes to play, that you can have up to a 25% reduction, and that that calculated parking supply would include provision for visitor activity. So we're confident that, we're not seeking the full 25% reduction, we're actually seeking a 20% reduction from the zoning ordinance. We believe through the consultation with planning and the commitment to the TDM programming in the proximity of the project and characteristics of other known built projects in Watertown, that that parking supply will be more than adequate. We have at least a reserve of four spaces, at least, during the highest use periods at night, inclusive of visitor activity. So if there is a ebb and flow of visitor activity, we have latitude of at least four spaces to make up that difference.
So, I mean, just simply, what does that mean? That that means the number of units, how many units are here?
There are 34 residential units, 40 bedrooms.
So, so how many of them can have a guest the same night?
Well, there isn't a rule, per se, and in fact, the actual auto ownership rate for these types of facilities in this environment is not likely to be one-to-one either. So I can't calculate, and we're not suggesting that there's a limit on how many visitors can go to each unit, but the characteristics that we've looked at, the industry standards, as well as observations and reporting of other like projects in Watertown indicate that that supply should be adequate.
I have a question on the parking as well, if that's okay?
We haven't had a staff report.
Ah, right.
So, all right, can we?
Let's leave you with a pretty picture instead of the words.
That's good. So can we have a staff report?
Be you done, mate.
Sure, I'll give you a, I'll give you a summary of the staff report. The details of the project have been gone through in landscaping, site characteristics, what they're requesting, previous permitting history. There actually isn't a lot of history that was identified, and since this is a replacement in its entirety, if there were any permits that had been approved, recommended removal of that. We did not receive specific comments. We did receive a few comments before the public submittal, one in support, and a couple of people that came in the office that were butters, that were asking questions about the fence, et cetera, which the fencing has been addressed within the site review. This project is in keeping with the strategic framework for economic development, which identified investment in the underutilized areas in Watertown Square, redevelopment and reuse of vacant sites, site redevelopment for the tax base. It's also in keeping with the comprehensive plan, again, for Watertown Square with a mix of commercial retail office with residential uses above it. It provides an infill of a partially vacant site at this time. The new building reinforces the street edge, and that was identified specifically in the comprehensive plan as well. And there's consolidation of surface parking into, it's sort of structured parking, per se, but it's within, underneath the building, shared parking and reduced parking, so there's a shared component between the commercial at the front and the residential above, and it provides pedestrian, improved pedestrian accommodations along the, within the public right-of-way and within the site. And then there's improvement to that area for the bus access. This project requires a special permit with site plan review. There's the four criteria for a special permit, as well as the criteria for site plan review, as well as the criteria for affordable housing. Staff found that the project, as submitted, and is, meets the requirement as far as it being an appropriate location for such use, structure, or condition. It fits within the context of the zoning district, which is the central business district. It does require a commercial component on the first floor, which has incorporated and has residential mix above that. It's a desirable location for mixed use in that it's within the edge of Main Street, but it's at the end. During the review process, staff suggested that they reverse the commercial and the residential components, so that the commercial was closer to the central business, commercial strip, rather than to the right. And they did make some of those changes. Criteria number two, the project does not adversely affect the neighborhood. There's certainly some changes that directly affect the adjacent properties. Those properties are of a similar size to the west along Main Street, and it does make a change for those sites. It does also improve the site from a perspective of a vacant and mostly surface parking lot within, with a chain link fence, and there's some improvements to the south and west. There's, it's also in keeping with the commercial and institutional uses to the east and north, and it provides a mix of uses and services that potentially could happen within that commercial space. And it also substantially improves the stormwater situation within Watertown, and improves the impact to the Charles River with that stormwater infiltration, and managing impervious surface areas and how they're treated. Criterion number three, nuisance, there's no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles and pedestrians as designed. They've created a 24-foot curb opening that's slightly adjusted from where it is today, and it's no larger than that. They've provided some pedestrian amenities along the sidewalk and are improving the sidewalk along the frontage of the property. They're improving the streetscape and adding bicycle storage and bicycle facilities in a covered area for 22 of them, and they're reducing the parking and increasing the bike storage, which will help reduce the number of single vehicle, single occupancy vehicle trips. Criterion number four, adequate and appropriate facilities to provide proper operation. Our different departments have reviewed this and find that this is appropriate and meets the requirements of the town. They've provided a, just as a note, they've provided information for their INI, they're proposing 4,710 gallons per day of flow, and therefore have agreed to a mitigation for that change with a, is it a ratio of four to one? I don't have that in this section of the report. So staff found that that was conditionally met as well. And then we have the 10 criteria for our site plan, landscape. There is no landscaping on the site today. They are proposing a small amount, but a meaningful amount of landscaping to the rear near the neighborhood, and a small amount in the front in order to help make a more pedestrian and more inviting central business district. They're adding shrubs and trees, and the vines is identified. There's a condition to provide structural soil as necessary for the street trees that they are adding, and they are also removing an existing chain link fence and a utility pole that's in the rear of the site. Currently, there's power, or maybe, I think it's actually other utilities that are coming from a rear utility pole through the neighborhood, and so that would be removed as part of the approval. Criterion number two, relation of the building to the environment, staff found that this was met. They did meet with our design consultant. We, the design consultant came to the developers' conference, and they felt that they had submitted a well-designed and is in keeping with the fabric of the neighborhood. There is a brief memo that supports that. There is identification of the brick and a preference that there be natural wood siding on the area that's shown where the commercial area is, but generally, it was in keeping with, and the design review was in support of this project from a, from that perspective for design guidelines. Open space, the project is required to meet a 20% open space because it's a mixed-use project. It is in the central business district, so typically, a building is allowed to cover the entire site, other than that they would also have to meet the stormwater requirements. This project, because it is incorporating a housing component on the second through fifth floors, has to meet that 20% requirement, and so what they've created was 6% of open space on the site, and then the rest of the open space are incorporated into those open terraces, which meet the requirements and are open to certain residential uses within the building. Site circulation, it does meet the requirements with the 24-foot wide curb cut and the parking spaces underneath it. There's one-way traffic flow in a portion of the garage or under building parking, and there's appropriate amenities for the handicap accessible spaces. There's also the park, bicycle parking, which we already talked about, and we went into some specifics on the traffic impact assessment, and they've also agreed to a transportation demand management plan that's a requirement and reviewed by our transportation planner. And one of the more important of the, for a basic TDM plan, they have agreed to be part of the Transportation Management Association, which means that they will have support on-site, even though it's a small project, for helping new tenants best use the public transportation options within Watertown and within the region. They've also incorporated bike repair stations and the three benches near the bus stop along the sidewalk. Surface water drainage, DPW reviewed and has conditionally approved the stormwater management plan, and they are accommodating up to 100-year storm events on-site. The final review and approval would require DPW a final sign-off, but that's conditionally met. Environmental sustainability, they've submitted their initial LEED checklist that indicates that they could meet this LEED silver certifiable. There's substantially more documentation that'll be required through the process to confirm that they've stayed on track with that LEED certifiable, certifiability requirements. They also are required from landscape, they're designing it to help reduce the heat island by removing, by actually incorporating a solar will take system onto the roof, which is also compliant with our new ordinance requirements, that 50% of the roof be incorporated. They submitted documentation in the initial design, and final implementation of that would be at the time of building permit. Oops, the wrong way. I'm trying to go over this quickly, but also cover all the points. There's a lot of different points. Screening, everything will be screened appropriately, and that is met, and from a design perspective, we talked about that to a certain degree, but we also have a requirement for limitation on the type of lighting in order to meet the compliance for a full cutoff, and for it to be turned off except for emergency lighting for any kind of surface parking after 10:00 PM. And then the affordable housing requirements, the project was reviewed by the Watertown Housing Partnership and staff, and they have met the four criteria. Partnership and staff and they have met the four criteria for the affordable units to be the same as and distributed appropriately throughout the site. They are proposing one affordable unit as a studio, three one-bedrooms and one two-bedroom unit. And so that's recommended for the layout that was submitted and modified at the housing partnership. So what is submitted now should be the, the recommended layout. And we have some conditions and some of them are standard. There's also some specifics to the construction because of the nature of the site. So they'll have to submit a specific construction management plan that's more particular with parking during the construction process. We have the affordable housing requirements, LEED certifiable, sort of, yeah, stormwater pollution, et cetera, within the, the conditions. That's my staff report. If you have any questions, feel free to ask me.
No, that was, that was long enough.
I'm sorry, yeah. There's a lot of criteria.
So do we have some board member questions?
Yep.
Comments?
Yeah.
Observations?
I'll start if you want.
Yeah, go ahead.
Sure. I think overall, I like the concept of, of reusing the site. It's a vacant building now, which is good. As I reviewed the application, I, I thought there was something to be desired in terms of the level of detail about context with the other buildings around it, specifically the one to the west. Some of that's been answered by what's in here, but for example, it's typical that we see a shadow study in here and there is no shadow study here. And one of the big questions I have is the effect on this, it's a condominium building to the west. It's unclear to me what the distance is between the facades of the two buildings. And then also, as I noticed this morning, as I was driving to work, that the existing condo building, the windows on that building are actually bumped out from the, the face of the building. So that's, that's one question I have. I don't know, Eric, if you know the answer to that.
Well, there's really no answer except to say, you know, we built the building based on the ordinance of 55-foot height allowance, FAR. So we did go to that height. The buildings are set, the buildings are set back as required. Actually, we're exceeding the setbacks. I think Brad, the setback was 10 feet and we're 15, or it's 15 and we're 17. So we're a few feet beyond.
Yeah, the, the setback from on one line is 13.94, 14 feet on that east, on that westerly side of the building. Their building is actually set back approximately five or six feet on their side. We're required to have 14 feet and we're 14 feet. To the east of the building, that's set back approximately 20 feet as you get beyond the commercial connection at the one level. So that's set back 19 point something feet. And from the rear, it's between 29 and 30 feet. Now, I understand in the central business zone, there's an FAR of four and no setbacks are required. We happen to be the second building in the row that's being built next to this one, but we're exceeding the setbacks on all of the levels surrounding the building. The other feature that I think is, the bylaw is the step back at the rear as it abuts a residence district. So you have the stepping back of the structure that Eric showed earlier.
So we did bring a shadow study?
So 18 feet, is it, so you said it was 14 feet on here?
It's 13.94.
Well, it's also slightly at an angle, so it's not exactly parallel. But in, on both sides, we exceed the setback required. That I can tell you. Now, we did sort of pull together a shadow study at the last minute before we could, after the submission. You know, in the mornings, the building on the west will be affected and the views from their apartments will be affected. So we're not trying to say they're not.
Right.
We're just in compliance. We try to make a beautiful building, a pleasant building, nice materials, do the best we can. And, you know, we didn't, you know, push all the way out as far as we could. We tried to be sensitive as we could to the neighborhood.
So are they, just from the, this is the first time we've seen this for the shadow study, just, are you going to block out the sun? I guess that's the question, right? It's always a question a neighbor might ask.
Certain times of the day, there will be a shadow cast.
But not all the time?
No, not at all.
Yeah.
I mean, the, you know, as you can see, north is sort of skewed, but generally, north is to the street, you know, so nobody in the rear is getting any shadow. Really, it's mostly the building on, on the west does get some shadow in the mornings.
All right. About deliveries and trash pickup, where does that, does that take place inside the courtyard? So do the vehicles have to go through the entrance into the back where the parking is for UPS, trash pickup? I know it was, trash was inside, but where the bin's going to be for the private company to pick it up?
So we're going to have roll-out bins. Bins are stored here.
Mm-hmm.
They're going to be rolled out to, to the truck.
To the street, so the pickup will be in the street?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. And Gideon, on the developers' conference?
Yep.
Is the fire department happy with access in terms of getting an ambulance in there if they want to or?
Yeah, they have all the headroom for trucks. We met with the fire chief. They were fine with our, with our headroom heights.
And most likely, they would not go into the building. They would just be in the street.
Okay. What else do I have? I just, in terms of the building, I know you were trying to match things, but one thing that's always, you know, you left an impression when you were doing the Arsenal Yards. And one of the things you had said there was a building should be designed for its time in terms of matching with other buildings. I just wonder whether this is maybe, and I'll defer to my architect colleagues, because they're more expert than us than I am.
Happy to talk about it and I'd love to hear people's opinion.
Just wondering whether it may be too, too matchy.
Well, we, it wasn't about matchy, it was about simplicity and quality and just with the, the, when I referred to mid-century modern, I was talking about just using quality materials and having nice proportions. We're not really trying to match anything. And the building to the west, I would suggest, isn't that handsome of a building. So we didn't take any cues really from that building. You know, the arsenal was different. It was, you were creating a whole place with a collection of buildings. Here, we're trying to be more respectful to the neighborhood and so keeping it calm and simple was our approach.
Yeah. I guess my last point, Gideon, one, one of the things I picked up on in the summary of the community meeting was there was concern about, with the previous owners about the, the time of trash pickup there. And I'm just wondering whether we, similar to what is in the next case, and there's the condition about the private hauler picking up the trash, if we include the time restriction of 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM as part of that condition?
I'm sure we'd be happy to comply with that.
So that's all I had.
Thank you.
Actually, I had one question. We haven't really seen an existing conditions plan of the site.
We have it.
What's there, what is not in this anyway?
Can I introduce Nitty John from my office, the project manager?
So certain sheets weren't included in this presentation, but the civil drawings were probably part of that, those full-scale plans?
We did get those, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the, yeah, that's the existing building.
Yeah, okay. Was that in another set we had or did we not?
I think it was in the full-size.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, we got these great big drawings too that nobody could.
I know, we, we apologize for that. Make sure next time.
Dangerous to deal with.
Need a bigger kitchen table.
Gideon told us, he warned us not to do that.
At least it wasn't as big as the other projects' package.
I warned you after you submitted.
Eric, just a couple of things. On the condenser farm on the roof, are you guys screening that acoustically?
We are not planning on it unless there was a specific ordinance to do so.
Well, there's a noise ordinance.
Okay.
In the brewing. I'm not sure if it's actually perked and finished yet, so you may be exempt from it. I don't know.
Okay.
But there is a noise ordinance coming or in effect, I don't honestly know. That would limit the DB level as a property line, so.
Okay.
But, but absent that anyway, I'm just thinking it's a reasonable thing. You've been very considerate about so many things.
Yeah.
Sound, with the air conditioners running 24/7 a lot of the year for the community around is not a, not a great thing, especially the, the residential piece. So I guess if you haven't thought about it, maybe I'd just ask that you think about that.
Yeah. Well, we've thought about it to the extent we are always looking to find the quietest equipment that we can accommodate. You know, we know it's on the roof, we try to keep it together away from the edges. You know, it's higher than most things around it. I guess I would say that if the noise ordinance were enacted and we were not in compliance with that, we would absolutely, you know, find a way to be in.
Forty of these things is, is kind of hard to ignore.
Thirty-four.
Even if, well, there's got to be some for the.
Pardon me?
Where, what about the retail?
Retail will have its own unit, which is actually on the, on its roof.
On the lower roof, right by those terraces.
Yeah. But it'll just be a package unit.
Yeah, okay. So no provisions for sound control on the condensers? On the parking, when we talked about that earlier, is the parking fee or cost decoupled from the rent or is it all built in? In other words, are, are people going to be encouraged to have cars because they have to pay for it anyway?
It was a consideration that the applicant was, was evaluating in our discussions with planning and our selection of various TDM elements. We're only obligated to actually select three of the TDM elements under the basic TDM programming. We've actually got four. And it's likely to actually, at the proponent's election, to include additional items that aren't listed and that aren't formalized in the TDM. For instance, the possibility, but not commitment, the likelihood, possibility of having showers in the commercial space, for instance. We believe that that will be plumbed for that reason. And that's an incentive for employees of that commercial space to actually use alternative transportation, walking, biking, knowing that they can take a shower. Unbundling of parking is what you're referencing.
Right.
That was being considered, but it hasn't been fully vetted relative to the marketplace and it wasn't a requirement of the formal TDM program. So again, the developer went above and beyond their minimum requirement and is likely to do additional items that are not listed in here, one of which could be, but is not guaranteed to be unbundling of parking.
I'm just, I guess I'm just curious, if you have 34 units and 30 spaces, including three for the retail, how do you assess that against the units? It's not like one space per unit, which makes the math kind of easy.
It's, in, in the simplest explanation, it's self-regulating. If you opt to lease rent at this facility, knowing that there are limitations on available parking, you will make a conscious decision at that point as to whether or not you feel comfortable on the availability of parking on a regular basis.
Yeah, okay.
And we see that in the PTDM reporting for a recent residential project along Arsenal Street, the actual parking demand ratios are far below the one per unit. And that's a condition of, again, people electing to lease but not necessarily own a car, knowing that there's ample and efficient options to that, multimodal options. And this, this is exactly that type of a project. You've got Arsenal, I mean Watertown Yards nearby, you've got bus service along Main Street itself.
So you won't be telling potential tenants that they get a space for their unit? You'll be saying there's 30 spaces, you know, have added, basically.
That is correct. That's right, that, yeah. And I'll point out.
It's in the rent somewhere. It's just not identified.
I'll also point out, and I didn't have this in the presentation, but we actually inventoried the curbside parking as well as part of our study. And we compared that to the Watertown parking study that was done in June of 2019. And the results are almost identical. And that 19-space supply, which is within one block of this site, is about 50% occupied during nighttime hours when visitor activity might be occurring. And likewise, on weekends, about 50%. There are about 10 vacant spaces at any given time on a weekend and, and most evenings. So to the extent there is a parking constraint per se or an increase in visitor activity, that could easily be absorbed by the block immediately adjacent to the property curbside. And as a practical matter, if I were to visit the site, I would find it probably easier to simply park curbside at 8:00 at night rather than going into the garage structure itself.
Yeah. I guess my last question is, is the project financed? Anybody speak to that?
John, the president.
This is Ted Saracino, he's the owner of the project.
I, I ask that only because we have the pleasure of a vacant lot at 25 Mount Auburn. It's been that way for quite some time. I, I trust that won't be the case here. You guys are a serious team and good with that.
No, no, we're, we're going.
We're hopefully not going to have two of those in town. I'm all set, thank you.
Yep.
I, I can't wait to see this built. It's a blight right now. And I also, when I was looking through the plans, my, my, I kind of focused on the landscaping in the rear, tried to figure out who gets to enjoy that. Because it seemed that the only access to the bike parking and to that is through the garage. I realized later, looking at some of the other views, that the people that live on Churchill Street will get to enjoy that. And that's pretty nice. I used to live there once upon a time. But, you know, even if nobody looks at it all the time, it's a plus. So I really don't have anything negative to say. I think it's, I'd be delighted to see it. I think it's a good project.
Thank you.
Just, just a couple of comments. I think as David Gamble pointed out in his review, it's actually, it's a nice, what did he say? It's a, it's restrained in its architectural language and is read as a background facade to the ornate and historic town hall that we're in. And I, I agree with that, actually. I think, I, I like what you did with the, even just using the brick in a different pattern at the corners in a stack bond as opposed to running bonds, kind of a nice, nice touch. But I do, I do kind of agree where he says that the natural wood siding is preferred over the fiber cement siding and metal panel over the fiber cement panels. And I understand you're not, it doesn't make sense really economically to do that around the whole building. I just wonder if those two corners that face Main Street might benefit from a slightly higher quality material there. It's, it's really not a whole lot. It's, it's like, I guess between the third and fourth floor as it wraps the corner. Be nice to see those materials used there, but I understand you're not going to run it all the way down the sides. It's not really seen by too many other people.
Yeah, we thought a lot about this. So this, the screens in the front and the facade is going to be real wood. In terms of the use of fiber cement versus metal panel, the metal panel, we felt is sort of a commercial, it's sort of commercial. And, and yes, that is facing Main Street, but then it's like, then you have another material because we just want it to be one material that starts out the corner and then goes back, so it's not like multiple materials. So I think it's just a matter of, you know, nicely detailing it and so it's, you know, clean and crisp and works its way back into the neighborhood.
Yeah. I mean, I've, I've seen, you know, fiber cement panels of this size, if they need joints, that's kind of where the.
Yeah, that's where the rubber hits the road. Yeah, it's absolutely how you detail it. So we're, you know, we don't have a detail figured out yet, but we're going to make sure it looks pretty.
Okay. Yeah, I'd just encourage you to really think about the detailing of those corners because that's where it could be really successful or fall apart.
Agreed.
I think that's all I had. Thanks, it's a nice project.
Thank you.
I have one other thing, Eric. I was just thinking of, have you considered at all carrying the wood that's on the commercial across the base of the building rather than bringing down those piers? Just so there's a consistent wood vocabulary to the fence that's at the adjacent property to the other side? It almost seems like just a natural and let the, let the heavier materials sit on top of that. But it's an architectural question. It's not a.
Yeah, I think for us, providing a little bit of variety, allowing the metal to come to the ground to represent the portal to the garage, letting the brick come to the ground on either side of the, of the lobby to let the residential come to the ground. So it's sort of like a choice, like you say, but there's reasons for doing what we did. Brick comes to the ground to represent the residential, the metal kind of creates this portal, and then the wood is the retail. So there's like this sort of form follows function in a way.
Okay.
So two simple questions. These are rental units?
Yes.
Not condos?
Correct.
Rental units. And is this steel frame?
This will be a podium, steel podium with wood above.
Oh, well, yeah, okay. No, it's interesting because the plans show very light, they don't show heavy construction.
Right, only the ground floor would be steel.
Yeah. All right. Any, are we all through? Any questions from the audience? Comments? Yes, ma'am. Actually, you've spoken before, so why don't we have this gentleman first?
Yeah, put the mic.
No, I just wanted to follow up, sorry, Chris Penland, Watertown. I just wanted to follow up on. I just wanted to follow up on your question about the, the parking issue and your response. Does that consider the overnight parking ban in winter? How does that play in if you're factoring in those?
Our contention is that the onsite parking supply is consistent with what's allowed under zoning inclusive of any overnight visitor activity, should, should that occur. And to the extent that during other periods of the year or throughout the year, parking needs to be augmented as a practical matter on street, that it can certainly serve that purpose. So we're aware of the overnight winter parking ban. We don't believe that it's going to be a factor in the successful operation of the site. And certainly, the tenants, knowing those constraints, would be sensitive to that before inviting guests over.
So it means your dinner to guests have to go home before midnight, I guess.
Exactly.
Probably a good idea. Yes, ma'am, did you have a comment?
So I have, I have a couple of comments and a couple of questions. One comment that I have for Watertown, it's really crazy that terraces count as open space. I mean, it's just crazy. We should be doing everything we can to, to improve our open space and our, we should have a, we should have a special rule for green space, a requirement for green space on properties like this. That's one comment. The rest of my comments are about, about landscaping. One thing that's really nice to see in the property, and, and we talked about it in the community meeting, was the fact that along the street, they're putting in a, a tree trench. A tree trench is a really good thing because it means trees can have much more room to grow their roots. But in the design, it's called a tree trench with sand-based structural soil. Sand-based structural soil has a specific purpose. It should go under hardscape so, to provide a, a engineering spec for, to support the hardscape while allowing roots to grow through it. Structural soil, even though it's called soil, is not nutrient-containing soil. It's a medium that roots can go, grow through. And so it's really useful under sidewalks, for instance, between, between a tree trench and someplace that roots can grow towards a water source or towards a, a soil source. But if you have a tree trench that's full of structural soil, you don't really have an optimal situation for growing trees that are going to have long, healthy lifetimes. The one good thing about the structural soil is it allows trees to, to grip the ground much better so that they'll be hardier in wind. But if you want trees, and I think we should be thinking about this in Watertown, trees are really important part of our green infrastructure, and we really need to be devoting a lot more thought into making sure that they have long lifetimes so that they can grow big and grow to the size, both in terms of their root systems, in terms of the canopy, so that they can do exponentially more for the, for our, our urban environment in terms of, of absorbing stormwater, in terms of providing shade and, and cooling the, the general environment. So I'm a little concerned about that. I'd like to see real soil in the tree trench and structural soil under the rest of the sidewalk so that the roots can go into it. The other comment I had and question I really is about the row of hornbeams in the back. It's great that they're hornbeams. I'm a little concerned about what's being done to make sure that these trees have long, healthy lifetimes. They look very close, and it looks as though the amount of soil that's available to them is, may not be enough to sustain a row of five hornbeams when they're mature. That site used to have at least one really big tree, and a really big tree like that was just providing all kinds of natural benefits for the neighborhood. That tree is long gone. It would be really nice, it's wonderful that those trees are, are planted, but it'd be really nice to be really sure that they're going to have long, healthy lifetimes. And I'm not entirely convinced that five hornbeams in a row are going to do all that well in that space.
Any other comments? Good.
Marcia Cero from Thirteen Bay. I was just curious, I came in a little late, so I don't know, the, the lower building in the front left, what, what is that going to be? Or what do you expect that to be? Commercial, so it could be a restaurant or something like that?
Probably won't be a restaurant.
Okay, all right. So it'll be closed at night?
I respect it.
Yeah, because I, I just don't know what, the parking, for a building this big to rely on street parking is, I think, kind of ridiculous. But if that building is also retail and requires parking during business hours, I'm not sure how that would work as well with that, so.
Paula Halpin, Walnut Street. In the very beginning of the presentation, I believe that a diagram would show that the affordable housing units were on the third floor? That's not correct?
It's a mix.
It's a mix.
It's each floor.
And then I heard you say it was a mix, but.
Every floor.
Every floor. Okay, great. Okay, so I, I just didn't hear it correctly in the beginning. All right. Terrific. Thank you.
So I think we're ready for a, sorry.
Just a comment about the parking. If you drive by Arsenal Street, the new construction at night, you can see.
Your name?
David from, David Lu from One Seventy, the, the less pretty building that we will You can see their cars just parked on the street, you know, like, it's a public good. Why would a developer not have enough parking for their own building? You know, our building has a bike room. We have one parking space per bedroom, and that seems to work well, and people want more. You know, sometimes people park on the street. So if you consider forty bedrooms with under twenty, twenty-something spaces, you're going to have these people with cars and, you know, imagine like, are thirteen people really going to ride their bikes to work? You know, the bike rack, it's, it's a nice addition, but it's just, and also, another place is recently completed apartments near Howe Park. They basically take up the Howe Park street parking because I walk the dogs, I know people who walk the dogs. After the apartment gets completed, residents there park the street on the street parking and taking up space for people to visit the park. So I'm just concerned that the street parking would just be taken up by the resident, you know, forty-plus bedrooms that only has twenty, twenty-something spots, even though they can take other transportation options. Thank you.
Hi, Mary Benham-Nagren. I live at Fifteen Church Lane, which is the property to the rear, that abuts the rear of this property. I have a couple, I do definitely have concerns about the parking. We keep talking about thirty-four units, but many of them have multiple bedrooms. Some have three bedrooms, which typically that means a family, and lots of times that means more than one car. So you're not talking about thirty-four cars trying to fit in twenty-seven spaces. You're talking about many more cars trying to fit in twenty-seven spaces. And I've lived in my place for almost nineteen years now, and many of the other residents, there's eight, four, four units there. There are six to seven cars usually there, only two of which leave during the day. There at, on the Churchill condos, there are four units as well. There are eight cars. I don't know, because I don't know how many leave during the day, but you're talking about the same number of units in both places and not just one car per unit. It's, would be great if we all had one car. And it's, I, I know that you want to encourage people to have less cars because it's better for the environment, but there's also reality. And I think to try to shrink forty or so bedrooms down to twenty-seven spaces is not going to work. You're going to have full street parking. Main Street, I don't know, I don't think it's really as empty as everyone says it is, because when I walk on Main Street, there's cars parked there in the day and at night. So I, I don't think that twenty-seven spaces is appropriate for a building this size. As a resident within a budding property, I am concerned about the noise from the, I'm in the back, so the noise from the terraces. I'm concerned about the light from the terrace, I am. I will say that I did meet with the developer, and the trees that are on the upper part of the wall were added because of our concerns about all of these units staring down into our house, into our yard. So I do appreciate their respect of that. I am concerned about, there's eight units on the back, so that's a lot more noise. And I'm also concerned about the fact that right now, it's required, but the current owner doesn't do anything about it, that that gate be closed from ten in, at night to six in the morning. Because years before I moved in or was even living in this state, kids were hanging out in the parking lot at night, and so that was the solution. This parking lot, there's just the one little entrance. So a gate was required when it was a full view by the police when they drove by, and they could see exactly who was there. Now, these kids, hoodlums, whatever they were called at the time, can go through the parking gate and hang out in the back without the police being able to easily drive by and see them. The idea of a gate that would be closed, say, ten to six, came up at the community meeting. I would like to propose that something like that occur because everywhere around it is residential, there have been concerns in the past that have been taken care of by the town or the zoning or whomever did that at the time. So I do have a concern about that. And then I don't know if necessarily this is the appropriate place to ask, but I am going to ask, what are the working hours when they're, whether this construction happens or other construction happens? Because it's surrounded by residential, what are the working hours for construction? Can they all start after eight o'clock in the morning, seven o'clock in the morning?
I mean, typically, it's seven AM is the allowed start time, but they have to submit a construction management plan as part of their construction plan because there's going to be stages of that, so.
They will control the site.
Right.
Right now, you don't own the site.
I understand you don't, I, I do understand you don't.
So for, so construction is a, is a phase, and during construction, there would be, they would be submitting a timeframe for how they're going to be managing it, and it'll be different throughout. And when they're working out of the hours, they would have to come up with a plan with the town for doing something. Occasionally, there has to be something that's done out of the, the timeframe of seven AM, as, has been shown with some of the other projects in town, but.
Okay. And then there was also, someone made a comment that something about the lighting at ten PM changes? I didn't.
It was a, it's just a condition of the approval, but we, we also have requirements for all exterior lighting to be full cutoff. So none of the terraces are above a certain, I think, twenty feet would be allowed to have lighting installed in them that are shining out. And then, so the exterior lighting on the building would be limited. And then the, within the parking lot, there would be requirements on the height of the poles, and then the lighting would have to turn off, except for emergency lighting after a certain timeframe because of the residential nature of the rear.
Okay, because there was a, it'll be gone because it was on that street pole and it hasn't been on for years, but there was a, a light, you know, a, a streetlight.
The old pole that's in the rear corner.
Yeah, there was a streetlight.
That's proposed to be removed and.
Yeah. I just want to make sure that we don't end up in a situation where that's back or something like that is back.
That wouldn't be allowed like that today.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. So, are we ready to?
I have a question for staff.
Yes.
Gideon? Gideon?
Mm-hmm.
I have a question. Mr. Saracen just indicated that they did not own the property. Could you just kind of clarify for those of us who don't understand? I had always believed that the petitioner needed to be the owner or have the owner as a partner in some organization that was the petitioner. How does it work?
I mean, Bill can, Bill York can also speak to it, but our requirement is that the property owner signs off and allows someone to move forward, so if they could have any, any type of arrangement with a property owner, the owner does not have to be the petitioner. That's why we, we have two categories. Some are petitioner-owner, and some are petitioner-owner, and then there's also agents, which are.
Yeah, okay. I mean, I assumed that there's legal bases for all of this. It just didn't strike me. When, when you said that, it brought it home that, oh, if you're not the owner, how do you actually carry this through unless the owner's a partner in your LLC or whatever it is? Okay, thank you.
Jason.
Okay. Oh, was there?
Curtis.
Why don't you go ahead?
Just on that point. Curtis Whitney, Watertown resident, and also representing the Salusti family, which owns the property currently. They are very excited to have this new change of the property come forward. They realize that since they've lost the Seven-Eleven tenant out there, it hasn't been the most attractive site in town, and certainly are looking forward to make a change for the better for the community. Their longtime family being involved in the town for multiple generations, and they look forward to this being a wonderful change of the site and fully endorse it.
So I'll keep this brief. I just want to make a comment in response to the last two comments from the members of the public about the, the sort of, you know, adequacy of the parking. And someone had alluded to this earlier, but there was a study for, just for the benefit of the people here, that undertaken this summer on the properties on Arsenal Street, and it found that there was way more parking built on these recent developments than is being used. So I think, you know, that's something we're trying to, if, if that's, if that's the case, it's incumbent on us to try to encourage people to build less parking so we're not building it for no reason. So I, I understand your comments and I, I know where they're coming from, but I think the reality in this town is, is changing, and I think we don't need one parking space per dwelling unit. And I don't know, maybe the ordinance will change at some point in the future, but that's sort of the reality out there, so just empirically, that's what's going on in the town.
Is it all right?
Easy to get up there.
Do you know if that study took into balance the occupied units versus the occup, I mean, and the occupied spaces? I.e., if the buildings were not fully occupied and the garages were not fully occupied, that would make sense. But if the buildings are, you know, say eighty percent occupied, was the parking balanced to that? I mean, if there's twenty, you know, if the building is.
I can speak to it. It was, it was actually a, a regional, region-wide parking study that was done, and it was a, it was a parking count study of what was being used at night at residential, both commer, both rental and condo. It was done by MAPC. They had a bunch of interns that went out in the middle of the night, every night, to a bunch of different developments. And so we gave them several completely built, fully occupied sites in Watertown, and they reached out to the property management entities for those sites. So that was, part of the study was Watertown, and part of the study was all over the region. And it was fully occupied, and it was a range of types of sites, including condos and including apartment complexes. And, and the numbers did, did range, and it did depend on where you were in this town or where you are in other towns. And the area where this is, is the area where there's the least demand for parking. And so that, and it was shown to be less than, less than one space, which is, our ordinance since the nineteen eighties has required only one parking space per unit in Watertown Square with the allowance for that reduction of up to twenty-five percent added later. And it has often been the case that the other parts of town have, it's more based on the number of bedrooms, but in Watertown Square, in the central business district, it has been more of a, the concept of a mixed-use and multimodal area where there wouldn't, different people may choose to rent when there's less parking available. So it may not be the people that need two or three cars that would be choosing to rent a place in the square. And that's the case for most of the square where there's already housing that doesn't have parking. have parking. Because that is prevalent in the more urban part of Watertown, you know, the Watertown Square area.
Okay.
So, we need to reach a conclusion here. Are we ready for a vote?
Okay. A move that the planning board recommend to the zoning board of appeals, conditional approval of a special permit with site plan review under section 5.01 K2, mixed-use development greater than three residential units, and shared reduced parking, as finding that it meets the criteria set forth under 9.03, 9.05, 5.07, with general purpose of the ordinance.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No. So, in a week, you go to the zoning board. Thank you. Want to take a five-minute break? Yeah.
There's some ice.
Lawyer is suggesting a five-minute break.
Right. So 10th of an hour.
Well, we've got one more to do.
It's a big one.
And our next case is 85 Walnut Street and 101 Walnut Street.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Matt Price. I'm a vice president with Westbrook Partners. We are a global real estate investment company, who's the owner of the property here, as well as the prospective developer of the site at 85 Walnut Street. I work on, as part of a local team, office here in Boston, who oversees all of our local investments and projects. So first, I'd like to thank you all for staying here late and hearing from us on this evening. And also, we'd like to thank the members of the community who are here, who we've spoken with over our community meetings, as well as various town groups. Your feedback has been instrumental in allowing us to get to where we are today, and you being so gracious with your time has been helpful in informing this project, and hopefully you'll see tonight that we've been able to make some progress from those early designs through to today. Before we move any further, just wanted to introduce our project team, if that's helpful. So we have Blair Hines, our landscape architect, Giles Hamm, transportation consultant, Roy Smith, civil engineer, John Sullivan, here as our architect, Bill York, zoning council. And then, as was alluded to earlier, we're also presenting for both our 85 Walnut Street project, as well as the 101 Walnut Street project. Kate Crosby's here on behalf of the Davis Companies. So John Sullivan's going to take you through the presentation here, but just a couple comments that I wanted to make before we get started. So shortly after acquiring this property about a year ago, we started meeting with various town departments, community groups, and what became evident fairly early on that there was a desire for commercial development here, rather than additional residential development, as we'd seen abutting our property in recent years. So we were excited about that prospect, and we think that our project will be able to contribute significant number of highly-paid new wages and jobs in the area, and will help to augment the local tax base. Additionally, those meetings helped to inform subsequently over the past year some of the key focuses of the community, of community groups, and staff members, and we've been able to, over the course of that year, evolve our design, and we're proud of a number of things that we've been able to accomplish to get us here today. So I'd like to just touch on a couple of those. So what became immediately apparent is, this is a commercial property, it has been a commercial property and zoned commercial for quite some time, but it's very much part of a residential community and part of that fabric. So for us, as a commercial project abutting a residential environment, we wanted to be sensitive to the impacts on our neighbors, and really find ways to improve the public realm. So although in this unique case zoning envisioned, the zoning parameters envisioned massing near those residents, I think what you'll find tonight in our design is we've tried to push as much of the massing away from the residential neighborhoods as possible, and in doing so, we've been able to create a very large public amenity park up on Walnut Street, which we think creates a really natural buffer between the commercial area, where the massing moves towards Arsenal Street, and the residential area up on Walnut Street and Birch Road. Improving site access was also paramount for us in reducing the impacts to the community. Although the existing building has always only had access to Walnut Street, we realized the real value that would be created by allowing access to the site from Arsenal Street. So as I mentioned, Kate's here, and they've been great to work with, we've been able to reach an agreement to create an easement through their property, which would allow access vehicular, bicycle, pedestrian access through to Arsenal Street, which we think will improve connectivity for the residential neighborhood, as well as allow access, an access point to Arsenal Street that will reduce the impact on those residential streets on Birch Road and Walnut Street and all the residential neighborhoods on that side of our project. So as I guess in conclusion, we feel like this past year, all of these meetings we've had, and we thank you for all of those, have allowed us to really focus in, and John will drill down on some of the more specific items, but we've been able to evolve our design. That evolution has allowed us to be responsive to some of the feedback we've heard, and we think what you'll see tonight will be both a productive and successful project, both for the occupants, but as well contribute positively to the community as we improve the site. So I'll turn it over to John, and thank you for your time.
I'm John Sullivan, a partner at SGA, architecture firm in Boston. We were the architects for the Links project at 480 Arsenal Street, and we do a number of commercial mixed-use and life science-focused developments, you know, in and around Boston. So we're very excited to be here to present what we think is a, you know, it's a very positive vision for the redevelopment of 85 Walnut Street. Matt just did a great job highlighting all of the process to date, and we just wanted to, you know, I just wanted to present some ideas that really build on the feedback that we've received through many interactions with the, you know, with the town staff, with the community, and with the town departments that, you know, really has shaped what you will see tonight. So we like to start off with, you know, locating the site, you know, along Arsenal Street, and pulling back a little bit, just thinking about this, you know, about this site in the context of, you know, the relationship to Watertown Square, the relationship to Coolidge Square, access to transit, and really think about how this site starts to work, you know, in the greater context of Watertown. We also like to highlight, you know, the site's location in the Arsenal Street commercial corridor. We think this is important. The use proposed for this site is alignment, or in alignment with the strategic framework that the town created, as well as a comprehensive plan. So we feel like that this is, you know, very positive to, you know, again, contribute to, you know, some of the commercial fabric that's taking place and expanding along Arsenal To share some images of the site itself, it's a, you know, it's a 4.9 acre site, it has frontenge on Walnut Street, it actually does not physically front Arsenal Street, and it's been a commercial site for many years, a building that has grown organically over three different time periods. It's a three-story building, and it's about 90,000 square feet. The site itself has, you know, kind of a large change in topography, which you'll see in some upcoming images, and it's really this building with a lot of, you know, pavement and, you know, very much lacking in terms of pervious surface and some other, you know, natural features. I will say, though, that it does have an open space that fronts Walnut Street now that we recognize as, you know, an important part of the neighborhood, and something that we saw as an opportunity to build on, which we'll share some ideas about. You can just see the site here again, highlighting where the existing building stands, and really just kind of calling out some of the edge conditions along Birch Road and Walnut Street, which are, you know, a real residential fabric, and then, you know, the connection to 101 Walnut, which we'll talk about in terms of access. So just to highlight kind of what we're proposing, you know, this is a, you know, meant for commercial development, research and development, you know, life science center office use. The total square footage proposed is 213,500 square feet, which aligns with the 1.0 FAR. We're proposing a four-story building, set at the appropriate floor-to-floor heights for research and development uses. And then, as it relates to parking, we've kind of taken a strategy where we've identified, you know, the maximum required amount of spaces, which is 566, but we've, you know, put into place techniques to reduce the parking through the reduction clause, or a shadow parking strategy, which could, you know, reduce that parking, we're proposing reducing that parking by 168 spaces. So I think you'll see that on the plan, how that is organized. Bicycle, you know, an alternate means of transportation is very important to us. In terms of bicycle amenities, there's almost 100 bicycle parking spaces proposed for the site, both outdoor and as indoor long-term spaces, as well as many bicycle amenities to support it, repair kiosks, showers, things like that. And then, as far as the open space, that was something that, as you'll see, is really a driver of the vision. We are at a baseline threshold, greater than 30% open space for the entire site, and when we employ the shadow parking, that gets closer to 40%, so we're very excited by that. So we thought we'd take you through a couple of images that just describe our thinking and, you know, as it relates to the placement of the buildings on the site. As Matt said, we've received a lot of feedback, we took that into account, we've worked very close with the planning staff, and we just wanted to run through a few slides that kind of show that evolution, which kind of builds to our plan as we're presenting today. Starting off with, you know, kind of a zoning envelope that we understand, you know, from the ordinance that defines the setbacks, it defines the allowable height, and it defines a build-to line or a range on Walnut Street. So that was, you know, the area that we understood we had to work in. You can see on the image at the lower part of the page that, you know, there's about a 25-foot change in topography over the site, higher up Walnut Street, lower towards Arsenal Street, and that height, you know, envelope kind of follows that topography, so it pushes a little bit of that height towards Walnut Street. We started examining ideas, you know, where would you put a building, where would you put some structured parking? We wanted to put the building generally towards Arsenal Street to kind of fit into the idea of, you know, to be consistent with that commercial corridor. Our first pass at this was identifying that as a placement of the building, and then maybe utilizing some of the hill for parking. When we, you know, as we had, as we thought about that a little bit more, it became, you know, very clear to us quickly that that put the parking very close to the neighborhood, and that seemed, you know, like not the right thing to do.
Say that again, it became very clear, what?
That it started to orient the parking and some of that structure very close to the Birch Road neighborhood, and to the Walnut Street neighborhood, which, you know, is something that we did not want to do. So that was where we started. We tested an idea to, you know, maybe flip that around and have the parking oriented towards, you know, Arsenal Street, which in this case would technically be the rear of the site, or at least that's how we were thinking of it at this time, and start to use the topography to place the building. And again, kind of quickly came to the same conclusion, that that puts the building mass very close to the residence, and that's just something we wanted to be sensitive to. As we evolved and kind of continued to think about it, we looked at ways, from a zoning standpoint, working with staff, on how to, you know, maybe, you know, move away from that build-to line, and take advantage of that part of the site to provide a large public amenity. And you'll see that take shape in the form of a pretty substantial-sized park that we think is a real benefit to the neighborhood. But what that did was it allowed us to move some of that massing towards Arsenal Street and away from the residential neighborhood, and that, you know, is a driver for our design. You know, building on that, as we broke down where the buildings were placed on page 12, you know, we proposed a more compact footprint for the building, you know, using a four-story height threshold, and then thought that with that, the structured parking could move into the middle of the site, down the bottom of the hill, you know, again, placing all the height at the site's lowest portion, using the topography to our advantage, and pushing it as far to the east as we could. And again, really, that's just in an effort to create, you know, a good amount of distance between any of the massing and the residents on Birch Road. And we figured, you know, with that arrangement, that just provides a significant amount of, you know, opportunity for buffering. And I think, you know, scale gets a little bit lost on this big site, you know, the building itself is over 450 feet away from Walnut Street, the garage is an average of 185 feet away from Walnut Street, so, you know, these are considerable spaces. So we felt like, from a landscape standpoint, this could really be wonderful, and create a wonderful environment, and really, you know, achieve the buffering that we would like to, towards a residential neighborhood. And that resulted in, you know, kind of what you see as the diagram of our site plan and our, you know, site section. So I think kind of starting with the plan, we just wanted to overlay where the buildings are proposed versus where the existing building is now. And you can see for the building mass, that's pushed further to the south, so that it has presence on Arsenal Street. It creates a pretty consistent street wall on Arsenal Street, even though it's still 70 feet away from the edge. And then it allows the structured parking to be pushed towards the east, towards 101 Walnut, and again, provide a very, you know, substantial opportunity to provide a landscape amenity and a buffer along Birch Road and Walnut Street. You can see in the section at the top of the page, that the, you know, the structured parking, and this is showing the maximum height, you know, we're envisioning one level lower than this, is tucked into the hill. It uses the topography, the building again is placed at the lowest point on the site, and that's, you know, a 25-foot difference between the low point at Arsenal Street and the high point at Walnut. And again, just highlighting some of those distances, the building 450 feet away from Walnut Street, you know, the garage almost 200 feet away from Walnut Street, and this just gives a sense of the massing. I will say with, you know, with the height, with providing more compact footprint, and trying to provide more open space on the site, and with, you know, really gearing these buildings towards life science uses, our height is proposed to be five feet taller than the 55-foot threshold, and the mechanicals are three feet taller than the 15-foot threshold above the building. But we feel like those are, you know, tried and true dimensions for successful life science buildings, and again, really a focus of trying to orient that height towards, you know, towards Arsenal Street. So, you know, transportation was something that was really important and part of the dialogue as we, as we went through the process. This just highlights some of the work that Giles' team, you know, did to really collect data and to, you know, really understand some of the, you know, some of the constraints in the area. We've had a, you know, the results of that analysis, you know, show a, an increase in trips during the peak hours, 117 in the morning, 132 in the evening, but really, I think, once, you know, Matt introduced the concept, and you'll see it in an upcoming slide, of, you know, gaining access to Arsenal Street from our site, as well as combining the existing driveway which faces Walnut Street, which is parallel to the existing driveway of 101 Walnut, into a shared drive that both sites share, this increase will be more equally distributed, you know, to both outlets or inlets, and we feel like that'll provide a significant reduction to, you know, to traffic on Walnut Street, which is positive. You know, other ideas that we've introduced into this concept, you know, again, focusing a lot on bikes and pedestrians, and by, you know, providing that access that, you know, to Arsenal Street, we're allowing, you know, bicycle and pedestrian connections to, you know, exist between Walnut Street and Arsenal Street, which really opens up pedestrian travel, you know, throughout, you know, points beyond in Watertown. That includes upgraded sidewalks, accessible routes, you know, pathways that really focus on pedestrian experience through the park, and then the bicycle amenities, which we had mentioned before, in terms of, you know, repair and amenities for people to shower when they arrive to work and that sort of thing. As far as logistics go, we are, you know, proposing a TDM plan, which would include an onsite employee transportation coordinator. We're participating in the Watertown Transportation Management Association, and that will include, you know, kind of a monitoring and a reporting plan to make sure that the site is actually working the way that we, you know, that we're proposing and the way that we think it will. And then, as far as the site works, you know, we're really promoting the proximity to public transit, we're improving local conditions in terms of, you know, signage control, and then again, really promoting cross-site activity, and we think that that's just such a great opportunity with getting access to Arsenal Street. We've also been working with the DPW to talk about some off-site improvements, and we just, you know, wanted to share a few of these here, mostly focused on, you know, pedestrian and safety measures. This shows bump out and a crosswalk at Lincoln Street and Walnut Street, which was, you know, an important area that we received feedback on. We're proposing, again, a large park that fronts Walnut Street, so with that comes a bump out, some signage, and another crosswalk to, you know, provide safe crossing for people that want to use that park from the neighborhood. At the corner of Cypress Street and Walnut Street, you know, again, feedback was that this, you know, kind of the wide opening that exists today is dangerous in a lot of ways, so, you know, this was pointed out as an opportunity to improve this and to kind of tighten up that intersection and modify the geometry to make it safer for vehicular and pedestrian travel. And then, and then really, what we think is a considerable improvement is, you know, aligning the new entry to 101 Arsenal, which again will provide access to our site with Louis Street, and with that providing, you know, turn-in lanes that are dedicated for access into the site, and, you know, signaling this intersection, and really providing a safe, a safe environment that, you know, that controls the traffic here and, you know, reduces it as people are coming in and out of the site. And this, you know, this kind of shows you the impacts on our site. So again, to the, to the left side of this image on Walnut Street, what was, parallel driveways, which presented a, you know, somewhat dangerous condition as it related to vehicular turn-in, is now merged into one. We think that's, you know, really an advantage to have that shared drive, which, you know, provides one opening along Walnut Street, so to mitigate some of that access. And then, you know, the connection to Arsenal Street, you know, through the easement agreement with 101 Walnut, which we think gives our building a front door, we think it gives, you know, pedestrians a way to really connect from Walnut Street all the way to Arsenal Street in a very pedestrian-friendly and ADA-accessible, you know, manner. And really, you know, orients a lot of our access towards Arsenal Street for loading, for arrival, and we think that that's very positive, because again, this allows the impacts to Walnut Street to be greatly reduced. So this is, you know, what that means for our site plan is, you know, again, we've described the building facing Arsenal Street. This is about a 50,000-square-foot floor plate, breaks down really well, and is very flexible for lab and research and development use in terms of two, roughly 25,000-square-foot wings. You can see that there's a courtyard in the middle, towards the top of the page, that, you know, reduces our massing, which is important to us, but also gives us a real front door, again, facing the new drive towards Arsenal Street. There's a similar break in the building towards, towards the west, which is where we'll control our loading, that's kind of tucked in between the building massing, which we want to, you know, kind of keep a little bit hidden from sight. There is access for emergency vehicles all the way around the building, but, you know, the area for, for that access towards the south, as it faces, as it faces Arsenal Street, will be, you know, somewhat of an outdoor amenity space for the building. And then really, you see, you know, the structured parking, the green area that will come along with the shadow parking just below it, and then a, just about a 32,000-square-foot park. And we feel like this is just a significant, more exciting, you know, space that will be, you know, central to the neighborhood, building upon some of the open space that was there. So looking at, you know, how we've been thinking about that park, you know, the goal, and this is through, you know, a lot of dialogue and a lot of work with the landscape architect, but a lot of, a lot of feedback from the community is, you know, really, you know, how can this serve as a, as a real public benefit? And we just kind of highlighted a few zones to describe the park in a little bit more detail. There's an upper zone along Walnut Street, which will serve as the park's entry, you know, it's very, it's meant to be very passive, it's meant to be very natural, heavily planted, and, you know, this is what pulls people into, you know, into this park. Towards the middle of the park, where we feel like we have some more open space to work with, and this is all in the context of trying to preserve, you know, a lot of, a lot of the existing planting that exists today, but this is where we feel like we have a larger open space that can, you know, really support flexible activities, and in a way, the neighborhood could decide what, you know, some of those activities want to be at certain times. The idea is that this is very flexible, you know, very open, and we just kind of depict, you know, some activities that can be supported by this larger space, but this is, you know, meant to be open, so that it can respond to how it can be best used. And then, as we start to move down the topography a little bit deeper into the site, you know, we're kind of using the slope of the hill to provide some opportunity for, you know, natural seating, you know, somewhat of an amphitheater, we feel like we can have this series of spaces that can be used at different times by different people in different ways, which we feel like will keep it vibrant and active, you know, really all throughout the day, on weekends, you know, as, again, as a publicly accessible space. I will say that a consistent feature in this is, you know, natural plantings and areas that really express some of the outdoor stormwater features, and that's kind of consistent through the, through the landscape design. This is a view of the park from Walnut Street, and again, I think what we're trying to highlight here is that it's just, it's at-grade with Walnut Street, it's an expansive space, it's, you know, fully accessible to the public, and it does give you almost a 200-foot buffer to, you know, the first, to the first structure that you'd come into, so, you know, we think that this, you know, represents what that experience can feel like. Another thing that we've, you know, focused a lot on throughout this process is lighting, and our goal is to, you know, minimize lighting as much as we can towards the neighborhood while providing a safe environment for the site. So you can see some of the fixtures that, you know, have been proposed, all of them will be shielded to direct light down and inward towards the site. What you can see in the lower right image are a series of low bollards that, you know, line the site's entrance from Walnut Street, so the idea there is that all of these fixtures are low, they're pointing light only into the site, you know, there's nothing that's, that's coming out. And then the fixtures in the garage are meant to be on sensors, so they'll be on at certain points during the day, again, kind of to provide, you know, the minimal safety requirements, but in the evening, they'll be on sensors, so the idea is that they'll be off, you know, most of the time unless, unless needed. Sustainability is an important driver for this project, it's important to our whole team, we're passionate about it as a firm, and we've, you know, looked for ways to really, you know, implement that into this development, focused on stormwater management, you know, providing onsite renewable energy in the form of solar. We've described the landscape design, but that is a real, you know, big part of expressing our sustainable strategy, building performance, and then, you know, some lead targets that we, that we want to expand on. So, you know, what it means in this building, again, it's, it's a life science building, there's going to be a lot of equipment, you know, we always try to specify the highest energy-efficient equipment, heat recovery, things like that, that can, you know, again, minimize the energy usage. We feel like we can achieve a 20% energy reduction over the code, we'll meet the new stretch code, and then we always employ high-performance materials on our buildings. We've done passive house buildings, we understand if you can control some of that at the envelope, that, you know, there's a real, you know, big give back there, so that's important. We're currently, you know, lead silver certifiable, our target is gold, we feel like we have a pathway there. And then, as we, you know, we talk about the site, you know, there's a significant stormwater strategy that incorporates, you know, some large tanks, subsurface tanks to, you know, respond to the certain storm thresholds, as well as rain gardens that are incorporated into the landscape and native plantings to support that, so, you know, we're thinking about it in the building, we're thinking about it on the site. This gives you a sense of, you know, how this is, you know, applied to the site. Some of the dashed squares and rectangles just give you a sense of the significant tanks being employed for retaining stormwater on site, and that's been coordinated with the DPW. You can see the proposed solar coverage on top of our building and on top of our structured parking, so we're achieving, you know, 90% coverage on the structured parking, 50% coverage on the building, and we're, you know, excited to be doing that. And then you can just see, you know, where we're employing native plantings, ideas of rain gardens kind of sprinkled throughout the park, and then again, highlighting that we're, you know, we're 30% open space without the shadow parking, and when you include the shadow parking, which again is kind of shown below the, at the surface below the garage, that gets us a little bit closer to 40%, so we feel like that that's, you know, that's a good metric for a site of this size. So what excites us about the building? You know, thinking very closely about where we are in Watertown, thinking about the relationship to Watertown's, you know, history and Watertown's industrial past, specifically the relationship to the Watertown Arsenal, you know, we were inspired by that and by acknowledging that. We didn't want to recreate the Arsenal buildings, but we did, you know, want to kind of pay some, some reference to them, so we started looking at, you know, aesthetic that may express, you know, that reference to the, you know, to kind of, to the industrial vernacular, but also express that these buildings are research buildings, are forward-looking, and really try to, you know, find that balance, and these are some of the precedents that we use to, you know, communicate those ideas. As it, you know, relates to our building, you know, we wanted to share some images that, you know, show how that, that thought process is applied to the building. You know, the building, which you see a little bit on the left, has a consistent skin, you know, we've used, you know, we were very thoughtful about proportion and about window openings and about expressing some of the windows with some mullions that, again, pick up on that industrial vernacular. And then breaking away from that a little bit, as we face towards what will be the new entrance, to employ some accent materials that give a little bit of a warmer, rich feel. And again, you can see how the massing steps down, or breaks down between the two buildings, the entry kind of coming in between. At the, at the upper level, on the mast to the left, there's, you know, some sculpting of that top level to provide for some outdoor space. We've worked very hard to kind of keep the mechanical screening, you know, considerably in from the edge, which, you know, while accommodating for the equipment that will make this building successful. So we felt like this was really feeling comfortable and really, you know, presented a proud face towards Arsenal Street. As we, you know, share another image from, you know, from internal to the site, you can see more how the, you know, how that language is, is applied to the building, so you can see, again, kind of some of the rigor in terms of the window, the window orientation, the expression of the windows with the mullions, as it ties back to that industrial inspiration, and, you know, just, you know, how you would understand this four-story building to kind of present itself back towards the site. You see, you know, planted area in the foreground, and again, that gives you a sense of how, you know, how that buffer can start to take shape. And so that's internal to the site, and I And I think with that, you know, we wanted to conclude so that we could leave a lot of time for discussion and questions. Thank you.
What's your simplest site plan that shows the building to the east?
That includes the building, oh.
That it actually shows the.
That shows 101.
Building to the east.
Or the, or 101.
No, it's off of Walnut Street, Dave.
Yeah, I think so.
The VHB building, 101 Walnut.
What?
This show, I mean, this shows a little bit. You can see, if it's visible, it may be a little harder to read, but you can see that. So this kind of highlights the edge of, of 101 Walnut Street.
Yeah. Okay. Is that one, it's not in here? It's not in here, is it? It's in the stuff that we had earlier. It's in the one of the bedsheets that he has, is it? Okay.
What they're doing? They're just taking them out. They're sharing the driveway off.
So, you, you've done your thing.
I've done my thing.
So, do you want the staff report? Yeah, good. You all have seen this, obviously.
Would you like me to give a brief staff report now?
Yeah, please, yeah.
I'll, I'll just be very brief because I think that they've covered, you know, a lot of detail. They're asking for a special permit under a lot of.
We have to get off the street before midnight, remember?
Well, I think we have two hours. So they've asked for a special permit with site plan review, and they've also asked for an amendment to the 101 Walnut Street site in order to allow the shared park, the shared driveways on both Walnut Street as well as on Arsenal Street. So there's two separate staff reports, but I'm just gonna try to go over the one and then briefly cover the other as well. As far as the details go, I'm not going to get into the details of the site. It is, it is actually an interesting site from a history perspective, so I just wanted to acknowledge that it has been an industrial and commercial site in Watertown for a very long time. There's a rail corridor there that used, was an active rail corridor that transported a lot of stuff that really formed this part of Watertown. So I don't want to brush over that too much, but I, I do, I do want to acknowledge that double engineering has been there since 1975, and they actually purchased it from the, the developer who took it from a stockyard and turned it into a building. So it's, it's kind of an interesting history for, for the area, and that, the, the site that was built was Underwood, and they made, apparently, deviled ham. So, so it's an interesting story. If you're interested in the story of industrial Watertown, this area is, is really the heart of it in a lot of ways. So the, the requests, I don't think they called out in a good way how much they've made changes to the parking lot configurations and actually in response to the staff report. So they've, they've included substantially more shadow spaces, and all the graphics that they showed tonight show those extra shadow spaces. So I just wanted to give them kudos to actually making those changes from, I think, Friday until today, they were able to make changes to their site plan to show to the board of what that would look like. As has been identified, this is, this site is actually not only in, generally in the strategic framework, but it actually is one of the sites specifically identified in the strategic framework for economic development from 2011. It may be the, the last, it's one of the last of the sites. We, we have a few others as well. It was identified as the union market area and that there was a fragmented industrial use and railroads and a potential for pressure for big box development, and that this was the type of use specifically called out for this area. And the comprehensive plan, it supported that concept and highlighted it even more so. So I think that from a planning perspective, the site as a, not residential, but as a commercial and lab, research and development type of use is exactly what was identified in our planning processes over the years. There's four criteria for a special permit, as well as the 10 criteria, and staff found that, that the site is an appropriate location for such use, structure and condition. There clearly was a lot of changes that had to be ma, made and some, some really substantial public benefit as far as the open space goes in order to allow a, what in most cases makes sense, which is a build-to line, to be not used for this building. This building is built to the rear of the property rather than to the front of the property. And so the, the open space is the reason to allow that building to be built down there. By building it further down the hill, they're also being penalized with height because of the way that our quote is, and so they're asking for the height increase, but it's as far away from the residential as, as feasible for the commercial part. They're also building below the FAR for industrial, and if it was residential, it could be twice the FAR as they're proposing today. So there's some big differences if they were looking at a different use, which is allowed from a zoning perspective today on the corridor. So this, this, this 31,000-plus square foot public park is a key component of what makes this layout be feasible within the ordinance and the code. So I just wanted to make sure that we are aware of that. And then also, the changes to the VHB site were critical components because of the crossover access point on the, on the north side or on the Walnut Street side, as well as the lack of access on the Arsenal Street side have created lots of issues and would create more issues with two sites with the crossover. So, so their, their ability to make changes and get rid of those barriers that were identified in that economic development plan are, are pretty substantial. So I kind of skipped through all this, but staff supports the appropriate, it's appropriate location for such a use, structure and condition, and with all the substantial changes they've made to the site plan layout through the process over the last, apparently, year, they are improving a lot of conditions for the neighborhood and staff believes not adversely affecting the neighborhood. In addition to some of the physical things that they're doing on the site, they also buried in the documentation reference that during winter parking ban, since it came up tonight as well, that they would be coming up with a, a program for neighborhoods for allowing parking in, in some sort of scenario that they would develop as part of that transportation demand management program that they have. That's how it would be monitored. They've also, from a lighting perspective, they are meeting the requirements of the code, but they're also going above and beyond in reducing the amount of light that they are proposing on the site throughout the open space area and also in the parking lot areas, and they're using the most advanced technology for the sense, sensing when lights are needed within the garage structure. The garage structure is also the first structure built since our solar ordinance was passed, which is integrated into our zoning ordinance, and so the entire garage structure has a proposed solar roof on it. 90% of the garage would have a solar canopy, and so the lighting within the garage would not be on the types of poles that you would see in a, in a garage that doesn't have that type of structure. They have requested that because of the nature of the garage with the shadow that they would be, shadow level, that they would be postponing installation for up to a period of time while they identify the tenant's spaces so that they can, they don't want to build the solar and then have the garage built. From a perspective of nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles and pedestrians, they've substantially improved the condition on both sides. They've also proposed off-site improvements along Waltham, I don't know why I said Waltham, but Walnut Street, as well as Arsenal Street with the four-way signalized intersection, which creates a safer environment for both pedestrians and bicyclists to cross in that way. Currently, that crosswalk is set back from the Louise Street intersection and creates an unsafe environment or can potentially create a less safe situation for pedestrians because it's not in a signalized area. So that all of the improvements that they're proposing will substantially improve the, both vehicle and pedestrian safety, so it's not, not creating a nuisance, it's improving the situation. They also are looking at options which are not completely finalized for creating street calming along the Walnut Street corridor, which they briefly showed, in particular, the Cypress Street opening. I could see that being designed in a different way, but it's, the, the goal is to create a substantially smaller opening that's more of a standard intersection, and then also the pedestrian crossings across Walnut Street because at this time, there's no crossings except for at the historic park space. From a criteria, adequate, appropriate facilities, there's been a substantial review of that. They are not able to meet the 100% storm on site, but they have also agreed to provide some off-site finances, financial support for some downstream improvements. And because of the nature of the open space being at the top of the site, their stormwater is as great as they can make it in their locations that they can make it on the site. So DPW has conditionally approved stormwater, and I also wanted to identify, today, there's a series of utility poles along, between the two properties, between the site and the 101 Walnut Street site, and they have agreed to, they have, as part of their plans, are undergrounding those, all those utility poles that are on the, they're private property poles, but they're serving the two sites or maybe just the site. And there's also currently spotlights on some of those poles that would be removed as part of removing the poles. And then they would update the lighting to be code compliant, which is full cutoff along that area. And there was a condition that speaks, there's one pole right at the street that they're looking at undergrounding as well. They would need a grant of location in order to have that pole undergrounded. They've met all the other conditions. They've not only are meeting the lead silver, but apparently are now looking at being leads gold certifiable. So that was, that wasn't initially submitted, but that's been updated since their submittal. The 10 criteria for site plan review, preservation of landscape, they initially had a plan that removed more, more trees. They've gone through and identified as many of the trees as feasible that, to retain. It does, they do have to remove a few trees on the site, but they've also substantially increased the amount of open space on the site, and it will be open to the public. And so there's a trade-off between a substantial amount of new plantings and a few of the trees that are being lost on the site. There's a detail of that. Relation of the building to the environment, the site is a very unusual situation with a natural drop-off from Walnut Street, and so we've talked about the way that they've placed it, and I think that they've presented that in a detailed way. Open space, I don't want to go over it again, but they've provided 60, let's see, over 31%, but as, as well as the shadow parking, which looked about to be 37% of the entire site as open space. From site circulation, we've talked about that. They've substantially improved the site circulation, and it does comply. They've also worked with our transportation planner, Laura Wiener, and have a approved transportation demand management plan in place that is very substantial and has agreed to work with the TMA and also work with creating a shared shuttle system along the corridor, along the Arsenal Street corridor. Criteria number five, surface water drainage. They, they actually, their consultants are here to speak to that, and I already talked about it in a prior condition, so they are doing what they can on site, and they're also committing to an additional $30,000 to off-site improvements for some stormwater improvements for, that DPW has planned. Criteria number six, utility services, they will be able to meet the requirements with final review and approval by DPW or other entities as required. Criteria number seven, environmental sustainability. We don't need to go into the details with the lead checklist, and I think they are continually working on that, but they will be able to meet the requirements, and they've also incorporated the solar installation as, as was discussed on 90% of the garage as well as over 50% of the primary building. Criteria number eight, screening, they've submitted a, a plan for an entire screen wall along the primary building. Staff has had some conversations about looking at if, if they need to modify that or pull it in if, in order to make the solar system work, if, if it's not a requirement for sound attenuation or other requirements. So that's been a discussion, but that would be allowed as part of the final review. Criteria number nine, safety, staff has met with and we've had site plan review, and there was no concerns with the layout or the design of the access throughout the site, and the design is appropriate. And criteria number 10, design, we did have a, a brief memo from David Gamble, but he also spent several meetings with the applicant. And his memo states, I mean, it's, it basically reiterates what John Sullivan has identified during the, the meeting, that the way that the building is designed is breaking it up into two separate structures with that center core circulation. I'm not going to go into the details, but it's been submitted to you as well, and it is in compliance with the design standard, design standards, but also the design guidelines that the town has adopted. And as I've already identified, the lighting plan is substantial in its design with the photocell and occupancy sensors as well, and they've inset or shielded to remove any direct views of the underside of any of the fixtures from off-site from the garage at any of the levels, the garage, not just the top level. And so they've complied with and, and ensured that that lighting system is minimizing impacts the, to the neighbors. With that, staff recommends a conditional approval under the, under the criteria, and there was a note that the solar assessment should be replaced with an updated one, which was submitted to the board. So there's one in the packet that was an older version and needs to be updated with the document that I printed out that shows the compliance. And then we have a substantial number of conditions, but none of them are unusual and have been reviewed. There's also conditions in regard to the potential uses, lab and R and D use. There's a condition about access and easements in the solar energy and the shadow parking and, and suggesting working with the butters to maintain the community path in the wintertime along their frontage, or, yeah, along their frontage and potentially the adjacent frontage. And that, I hand it back to you. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
So I guess the question is, are we going to see this again at some point?
So this is a, you, they've requested a special permit, site plan review for the zoning board of review, of appeals to review.
Yeah.
And approve. And so this is the opportunity to, for the planning board to provide comments, suggestions, and for, and it's the first step for the public.
Will we see it again?
No. It would go to the, from here, it goes to the zoning board.
But I mean, there's never going to be a second thing on the other design, but materials.
Well, I can't guarantee.
Any more detail or, I mean, somehow with the arsenal, we keep seeing various things.
Yes, so this is, so you're the permit granting authority for the Arsenal Yards area, and it's an R M U D. This is different, so this is a one-time special permit with site plan review. The only reason that you would see it again is if they. The only reason that you would see it again is if they realize when they get certain tenants that they need to make changes. That would be substantial enough in nature that it's not a minor modification.
So I have a question for staff, maybe before we get into general questions, is that okay? Gideon, you were talking about the photovoltaics on top of the garage.
Yep.
And I got a, I didn't get what you were saying, I guess, basically. It sounded like somehow the PV would be deferred pending something with tenants. Can you back up and go through that?
Sure, I'll just read the condition. The solar energy system, provide an initial solar assessment at time of special permit. I'll just skip that part. The plan shall be approved. The installation of the solar system may be delayed by a maximum of one year from certificate of occupancy based on the information in the report, as determined by D C D B P. So what it means is that if they they're asking to not build one level of the garage, they do not want to install the solar system if they say, get a tenant that's an office tenant that needs more parking until they know if they need to build that other level of the garage. They don't want to have to remove it within that first year.
So the garage is maxed out, and it just may not be initially all the way out.
Right, it wouldn't it wouldn't be built potentially until they know who the tenants are, because if the tenants require more parking because of zoning and because of tenant leases, then they will have to build that additional.
Okay, so just to be clear for everybody else, then, the garage, as shown, will never be any larger. It might be one level less.
Yes, so they, if you look carefully at the plan, you can see a sketch plan of of what they're building, which is a whole story lower, or level lower, I don't like to use the word story on garages, but. And then the solar canopy would be on top of that lower level, but it would have to wait for up to one year. And so they they need to submit a solar, a photovoltaic installation and implementation plan. And so that would be more detailed and describe that prior, at the time of building permit for our department to approve.
How would the shadow parking work into that? Would they use the shadow parking first before they use the top? How would that come down?
So that's something that I think the board would, so the the neighborhood doesn't want a taller garage, from what I've heard. And so that's why they were doing a parking lot. But there's been comments from other people that would suggest that it'd be preferred to have a taller garage and surface parking last. But because I, as we as staff really requested that they do the shadow spaces, I would imagine that the surface parking would be reinstated first, because that's there. It's designed to accommodate it. And then that layer of garage, which is the most expensive and substantial, and, you know, there's a construction phase.
Much less expensive scheme.
Right, so that's, so I think that the shadow spaces that we requested at the, and that they agreed to at the last, you know, between last week and this week, would be the first spaces to be built. It's approximately 66 parking spaces. So those would be, those are set up so that it's landscaping, but they can just be converted into parking. So those are true shadow spaces.
Why wouldn't it work the other way around? Why wouldn't the garage be built at its full size and essentially the shadow spaces are green space?
Well, they are, they are, they're doing both. It's, so they're not building.
You're saying they might not build one level of the garage?
Well, so.
I missed something, sorry.
I think I, I didn't. No, John, jump in. So the top level of the garage, which would be the taller one, is 102 spaces. That is not going to be built at first. The garage is going to be built, but that top level is not going to be built. And they will also, there's, so there's 102 spaces that will not be constructed. If a year after occupancy, they realize that it's not a lab building, it's an office building, they project it will be lab, and obviously, they go on a great expense by having to rebuild it at a later time. That would come back in, I'm going to refer to it as a shadow space, but it's really a reduction in the parking that within a year of initial occupancy, they'll know what their tenant buildout is. And they expect that they won't have to build that, but they're reserving the right to build it, but keep it low at first, and hopefully, it stays like that. The shadow parking is another suggestion that was well-received and made by staff and fits well within the numbers if it's a lab building. We would expect that that shadow would not be there. If it was an office building, it might go in a different, to go back to the 102 spaces on the roof.
I mean, it seems odd, based on my experience, because that top level will be the most expensive thing to do later. You'll have to completely vacate at least the level that you're constructing on, possibly levels below from safety considerations.
And John can speak to the construction.
And where would that parking go? Where do the people park who can no longer park in the garage because there's an extra level being added?
If it's a lab building, the projected required spaces are much different. The occupancy is much different, it's one.
No, I get that, I'm asking where the spaces go when they have to move people out of the garage.
He's talking about during construction.
Oh, for the construction.
It'd be pre.
I'm happy to speak to it. I think you're speaking to the complication, which in response to the request to reduce the height, we're willing to take on that what would be an issue that we would have to resolve. Certainly, the easiest path would be to build it all and have it there, and then you you don't have to worry about it. But we hope we won't need it, and we're willing to build it in phases accordingly with the understanding that the Watertown market has been prevalent for life sciences. We think there should be a lesser demand for that parking, so our hope is we won't have to.
I'm all for that, but that's not the question I'm asking. I'm asking, when the decision is made, do we need that extra level, if that happens? And I hope it doesn't, but if it does happen, where do presumably all the displaced parking spaces from the garage levels below, where do those people park?
During construction.
During construction.
During construction.
In speaking with the leasing folks, that would, as we market it, that'll have to be disclosed in the lease that there may be a period of X months where you can't park here, you have to, you know, or we have to rent parking spaces out of that. That'll that'll become a negotiation where there's excess parking elsewhere.
Okay, so there's no strategy then?
Let me go and I can play with this with other sites during construction phase is there could be, we'd probably come back to the board and provide plans to show where we can get offsite parking during the construction phase. That would be acceptable, and I think an alternative that the board has worked with multiple times in the past.
We actually have a condition that I didn't think, until you were describing this question, that we used for both Arsenal Yards and for the Arsenal and the Charles site that, you know, allows them to submit a parking management plan for the, if it ends up, because it's basically a phase that they're hoping they don't need to do. So that's why it didn't cross my mind to think of it. It's a phase that they're hoping not to do rather than a phase that they're planning on doing. So if they have to do that phase, there will be a period where there will.
But if it ever happened, we'd be required to find offsite parking sufficient to accommodate the needs.
So if you if you suggest, I would suggest this, adding that condition that speaks to allowing a parking management plan during the construction that includes them submitting, you know, a report to us with where they would be and how they would be shuttling people to the site, et cetera.
Can I just get clarification on something, though, because there's there's still a little confusion. So they build the parking garage one level lower than ultimately could be built and shadow parking at grade adjacent to it. So when, if and when it's determined that they need more parking, presumably, the path of least resistance is to put in the shadow parking at grade and not add a level to the garage.
Right.
I mean, that's the likely scenario, right?
Right, that's what they were, up until last week, that's what they had. They weren't even showing shadow parking, they were just coming forward with just the garage reduced. But but based on if it's truly just lab, they really, they can reduce it. And it's not even a reduction, it's just meeting the requirements for a lab.
So landscaping in that case can stay where the shadow parking is, and they don't need to add to the parking garage.
And so that's what we we suggested, and they agreed to, is that.
So this thing from this, and I was reading this during the meeting, this letter from Leo Martin at the Concom.
That was prior to this.
So should we disregard this?
I, what they're speaking to primarily, I mean, the only, the only point that they have in there, which I I think is to catch 22 with stormwater versus mature trees. That's the only point that, from an open space perspective, the Conservation Commission's comments, I think that by producing this shadow spaces and the drive vials gone in that whole area, it's a substantial amount of green space more, and it's and it's and it's more viable for, you know, it's a desirable use for the tenants as well. So the only other component that's left are there, there are some mature oak trees that are on top of where the stormwater system's going, and that's the viable location for stormwater. So I I struggle, I mean, I think those are very nice trees, but there's, you have, you know, it's like you have a stormwater requirement, and you have to put it somewhere, and that's where it had to go. So that was the lot, you know, it's like you lose one thing for the other. So that's that's the one thing I think that the Conservation Commission's letter speaks to.
You made some reference early on to taking out fewer trees than are referenced here, though.
Yes, so the original plans looked to removing trees, basically, all of the open space up near the Walnut Street and along the side adjacent to the residential, it was just going to be all removed because a lot of them are Norway maples, and they're older Norway maples. And so they met with Trees for Watertown and Libby Shaw, and they looked at options for saving most of the trees. I think there's about six, is it, and two trees that need to be removed within that oval area that are not in good shape, but the rest of the trees they're able to retain. And and when and if they die, then the expectation would be that they'd replace them with a more appropriate species that would do just as good of a job as the Norway maple, without the negatives of the Norway maple.
So I would point out that the Leo Martin letter isn't dated, so we didn't, we couldn't tell when it was.
Right.
Can I just further clarify that the, getting back, the solar system will still exist on the roof of the main building. The question is, how much of it would be on the garage?
So the reality is that if they're, they're going to submit a plan, and if it makes the most sense to install it all at one time, then that's what they'll be submitting, and then we'll have to review that at the time of building permit. That's the way the ordinance is written. So the Director of Department of Community Development and Planning will have to determine if that is a reasonable request. And so we will need to be, it needs to be based on the information. If if half the tenants aren't identified, and it turns out that half of them are not lab, and they don't need nearly as much stuff on the roof, then their plans would change anyways, I would imagine.
So and the decision point is within one year of the occupancy, so to be, so.
So they have, no matter what, that's the final.
So between zero, month zero and month 12, the decision whether to add that extra level to the parking garage will be made. It's not something that can just get deferred and, you know, the classic, kick the can down the road. So at month 12, after C of O.
They'll have committed to.
They'll have committed to whether the parking garage stays as is or goes up one more, is that correct? Am I correct?
Yep.
So we're kind of penning it in a little bit.
It's actually, not even, not even just that, it's, we're not even talking about the garage. It's really the installation has to be done within one year.
Right.
So so they'll have had to make the decision about the garage structure.
Before that, so they could have started by month 12, right?
So can I follow up, since we're talking about the, there's apparently some issue as is common in the in the industry about who's going to be the tenant, who's going to come, and what you're going to do. How are you planning on handling the mechanical systems from the same perspective? A lab is one thing, an office is quite a different thing. Is that going to affect the penthouse and such?
Yeah, so no, it's a good question, and I think it does tie into the to the parking strategy, but the building is really being designed as a, you know, with the bones of a lab building. So it'll have, you know, equipment to support what we think would be a 60/40 lab split on any floor. So it'll have, it'll have lab infrastructure.
And that's part of the base building?
That's part of the base building.
So you're committing to labs in a big way with the mechanical system, but not with the garage?
I mean, that's a height issue between floors, too, isn't it?
Yeah.
It's a height issue between floors, that's why, you know, we identified, you know, again, by placing the building down on the site, that five-foot overage, because the floor-to-floor heights are being designed for lab use. So this is really being designed to be a successful lab building. And to the parking point, we think that that parking won't be needed because this will work as it is designed.
What is floor-to-floor height? I did not notice it.
15 feet over four levels.
So assuming approvals, when would this be undertaken?
Assuming approvals, when? What's that? What'd he say?
You don't know yet.
Assuming approvals.
I mean.
I would say, I'd look to John, how quickly can finish construction.
That's, that's, that's why I'm backpedaling. No, I mean, it would be, you know, maybe a six-month design process, and then and then getting a building permit and starting activities onsite.
So we're kind of scattering around here, but are there any specific questions about this submittal?
I had a couple.
You have more?
Yeah, I just had a couple.
Go ahead, yeah, sorry.
I'm just curious, since it's, you know, it's getting later, do you want to, at least the public hearing part of it? Do you want to? Or do you want to do the?
Want to have the board first and then like we do?
I don't know, I think we should allow the public to, they've been here for a long time, and let's let them.
So have we. So let's do our normal procedure, and we want to hear what your questions are, and then we'll, is there any more substantive?
I don't have a whole lot.
I just, I do want to say, I think the the design concept is 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 pretty solid. It was very well done, very well presented, and it was easy to understand the context. And seeing the evolution of the design was very helpful, too, about how things were moving around and how we got to where we are. That we often don't see that when it gets to here, so that's helpful to to understand that. I do, I think the the realignment with Louise Street, I think, is going to be a benefit overall. And I do like the idea of the parks and the trees that are being, you're really greening up the site. And I challenge you to to maybe take it another step forward. You have a lot of roof here, and a lot of it's covered with solar, per the ordinance, but there's a lot that's that may not be. And is there an opportunity to, we don't have it yet in Watertown, but is there an opportunity to do some green roof element on the on the office, the R and D building itself, which has a lesser solar thing? And it's another way of reducing stormwater, greening, you know, all the things that we're taught, we've been talking about here. And I just, one thing for, I would just throw out to the board to consider in terms of this, the condition on the community path, you know, when I read conditions, it always, this is the the permitter in me, it just, when you see a condition that says, "Consider doing something," it never really sits very well with me.
The reason I did that was because I want them to consider it, because it's not actually their frontage.
Ah, so we can't require it? We can't say they shall?
I'm just letting you know why it's a consider.
Exactly, I just, it just seems like with all the work that's being done here, to ask the applicants, and I would include both, 101 and 85, to maintain that so the the bike path is passable during the winter, is not a big ask. So rather than just saying, "Consider," I would I would suggest that we strengthen that language a little bit. That's all I had.
I'm just going to echo what Payson said. I really appreciate the way that you presented it and its evolution. And I think it's, basically, all the questions I had noted have been answered by the presentation, so, thank you.
And I'm pretty supportive as well, but I do have some questions. Sorry, I'm trying to make them easy for you. In an earlier iteration, I thought I saw an enclosure around the dock, and I don't see that anymore. What's with that? If I were a neighbor, that's one thing I might not like so much, is looking at trucks and listening to them idling and the various things that take place in loading dock areas, dumpsters and things like that.
No, that that's a good question. I think what we were, what we were hoping to do is to tuck, you know, to use that space between the building to kind of tuck them in there.
Wasn't it totally enclosed at one point?
No, it was not proposed to be enclosed here. It was never an internal dock.
I misread something, then. Okay, never mind that one. So let's talk a little bit about sound. You said you're putting the bones in for a lab building, so I I get what that means for the most part. There'll be a lot of equipment up on the roof and strobics and noise generating things, generators, standby power and things. How are those things being acoustically separated from the community? In particular, the residential community?
Yeah, that's a good comment. And I think, you know, the way that, the way that. And I think, you know, the way that, the way that it aligns with these two wings, kind of the connection piece between the two wings, kind of the, the middle of the H, that is where some of our outdoor equipment is. So it'll be centered in the building, so kind of pushed in as far as we can. That'll be a cooling tower, that'll be two strobe fans, one for each side, and some other, some other outdoor equipment. But most of the equipment, as much as we can, is kind of in, internal too.
So that's where they are, but are they screened is what I'm asking?
They will, they will be screened and they'll also be, you know, we'll, we'll do an acoustic study that proves that we will meet the ordinance, but they will be, they will be visually screened and acoustically treated.
And the penthouses are enclosed, I didn't.
The penthouses are enclosed, correct.
That's great. The other thing is just kind of a, a question rolling back the time a little bit. Did you ever look at entering the garage at the top so that you didn't need so much traffic running along the backyard property lines of the community residents next door?
Yeah, we, we did look at that and particularly the way that the garage kind of is a little bit embedded into the hill. We thought there could be some opportunity for that. You know, ultimately, we felt like because now a lot of cars are coming from, we looked at that more in the context before we had the connection to Arsenal Street. Now that we feel like more cars are going to come from Arsenal Street than Walnut Street, we would kind of want to encourage traffic happening there. And I think by providing a connection at the, at the upper portion of the garage for loading and egress and emergency access, we still need that drive-through, so it wouldn't eliminate that. It wouldn't provide that benefit.
So I guess my last question, is the plan essentially frozen at this point? The plan and the massing? Or is there going to be push and pull happening with the square footages as tenoting goes on and you go ahead with the final documents and so forth?
I mean, I think, I think if there, if there is any, it's, it would be extremely minor at, at this point as you go through coordination.
So what we're seeing is what?
Yeah.
You're going to get a permit on?
Yes.
You know, plus or minus inches, not, not stories or yards or meters.
We'll be coordinating towards this.
Okay.
That's the goal.
All right, good. Thank you.
So I'm just going to ask one question and then it has to do with, so you have access off of Walnut Street, which is great. You're also really close to Arsenal Street. And maybe if we could go to that, the diagram, it's page 22 on the, in the document. So you have paths that are shown for pedestrian circulation and vehicular and bike travel.
Right.
So I also, I also know that one thing you don't really understand from looking at this is that there's that very long, narrow building on Arsenal Street that kind of blocks this whole thing from the pedestrian experience or whatever it may be on Arsenal Street. And what I'm wondering is, so the, the, the diagram, the line that represents pedestrian circulation, so if you're coming on a, if you are taking the bus down Arsenal Street, which presumably you're hoping a lot of the, you know, people working in the building will do, it looks like what you have to do is, is walk through 101's extension or their parcel along Arsenal Street. It's kind of a long walk.
Yeah, the sidewalk there.
Yeah, right, to get to the building. But I, I guess I'm wondering, is, is there any more direct way to get from the Arsenal Street sidewalk to this building? Or is it completely hemmed in just by the neighbors' property and their parking lot?
It, it, it is hemmed in by that building and by the, the land that they own. We did, we did look at connecting, we were showing a, a connection to, to the adjacent Gables site, which could also provide access to Arsenal Street kind of further down.
Right.
You know, along, along this, you know, through, through this point here to connect into our site.
Yeah.
But this, there's, you know, there's kind of a physical, and, and lot separation there that provides an obstruction.
Well, just to speak to the bus, the bus stops there are actually just on the other side of Louise Street. On both sides, so one's right next to the VIP and the other one is right in front of the Lexus there. And so that, from that perspective, it's the most direct route if you're getting off a bus to walk through the VHB site on that new sidewalk. That's, well, it's only on one side of the, of it, but it is on that private way. There, where the existing driveway is, is pretty much the edge of the VHB, I keep using VHB, but 101 Walnut Street site. So you could potentially try to have a, a pedestrian connection there, but you would have to remove landscaping because it's, it wasn't designed to have pedestrians today. So it's just being removed as asphalt and it, it doesn't seem like it would make sense to have all the mature landscaping be altered in that area. At that, I, I hear what you're saying and I think, you know, it would be great if there was more permeability, but I don't know if, maybe, maybe there could be like, in that condition about putting that granite wall back there, maybe that could, there could be some like informal stepping stone type of option for people to walk into that area of the landscape.
It just seems like a lot of people are probably going to be coming in through that driveway, going down, you know, the sidewalk alongside it. Anything that could be done to make that process more pleasant, especially in like, on cold winter, snowy, cold winter days would be, I don't know what that is. It's just, it just seems long and I guess the answer is there's really no way to connect it any closer to the building than you're doing, unless I'm missing something.
So, let's see if there are audience questions, otherwise we'll move ahead here.
There's someone over here.
Okay, sir. Been waiting all night for this.
Yes, I have, yeah. My name is Steve. At 227, 229 Arsenal Street, which is directly across the street.
Your name, I'm sorry?
Steve Calvinides. And I've owned the, my parents and me have owned that house for about 47 years. I've sat here for three hours and all I've heard is about Burt Street and about Fre- about Walnut Street. I haven't heard anything about residents who actually live there, like me, about our concerns. And the biggest concern is you're adding more traffic to an already congested area. Also at that area, it's a single lane that doesn't even go straight anymore, it goes curved. And they're, they're proposing to have all their trucks go through there. I just don't understand. The building says 85 Walnut and you have an entrance there, you should utilize that first and not through that. Because Arsenal Street is already congested, it's down to one lane. Now they want, you, you, you can't really get by there. And now they want to add more and more trucks. We've sat there for the last 15, 20 years, they've built Arsenal yards, they've built the streets across, they've built the parking lot, and at some point enough is enough. We haven't, I haven't heard one thing said about a resident of Arsenal Street. It's always Burt Street, Walnut Street, yet we pay our taxes and we deserve some kind of resolve. You know, you, you, I don't understand why you can't use Walnut. It's going to be easier for the, for the people that work there to go through there because it's a less utilized road. Everything is getting shoved through Arsenal Street.
Yes, I, I didn't design it. So how do we respond to this? I mean, there's been some traffic study, we haven't seen much of it tonight, but.
Excuse me, with all due respect, the traffic study was done by a company that sold that rights to go through. So I think that's a conflict of interest.
It's actually two separate companies. The Nest is not the same as VHB and they don't own that site anymore. But so there was, there, there, the patterns of where trucks come from, they're not, officially, they're not allowed on Arsenal, on Mount Auburn Street. It's not designated as a truck route. And so truck, the truck paths and where they are, they're going on Arsenal Street and then they're working themselves around unless they're working themselves down School Street. So, so a lot of the traffic, and this, this is the case with Lynx as well, 65% of the traffic wants to come from, is it 65? Wants to come from the south. So it's driving on Arsenal Street already and then it has to circle around one way or another to get up to Walnut Street. 45% wants to go the other direction and they are driving on Walnut Street and they will be continuing to. And there will be some trucks, it's designed to take trucks from both the north and the south. So if a truck is driving down Arsenal Street, it doesn't have to work its way up School Street, on Walnut Street and then down into the site. Or if it's driving from Watertown Square, it doesn't have to drive all the way around. It would be going into the site directly. So I, I can speak to that, that's, that's a brief response. Arsenal Street is a, is a designated road within Watertown that does have traffic. As far as the lanes go, they are proposing to create a turn lane for Louise Street for those, the perceived issues with cars coming from the eastbound so that there isn't a concern about the cars going straight through. And I, and we did speak to the, you know, from a pedestrian connectivity to the river and safety and for bicyclists to cross over there, it's, it's a safer environment. But I, you know, that, that's a staff summary of, of some of the concerns of.
Sometimes it takes me 10 minutes to get out of my, my driveway. Because what happens is they're trying to take a left into VHB's parking lot and nobody's letting through, so what happens is it creates a lot of traffic.
Right. So this actually creates a, a, a better condition for access to VHB site because it's creating a turn lane into their site. And it's creating a through lane that can also turn right. So it's, it removes, it removes that particular, this design of the roadway would remove that particular concern. Any changes to the roadway will require a town review and also traffic commission. So, so some of the details, obviously, this is a conceptual plan for that, but it's, it's creating those conceptual.
What's happening is demolishes this and all that. Everything is going to go through Arsenal Street and that's not fair.
Yeah.
Like I said, four or five building fences. I pay my taxes every year, so I, I expect to get some kind of resolve that I don't get. And like I said, they, they didn't say one thing about the Arsenal residents. All it was, was Walnut Street and Burt Street. Yet we are the closest. My house is 20 feet away from that entrance. And I didn't hear one person say, oh, we met the residents, we parked there.
That's a, that's a.
You know, and. You want to get something, you should be able to talk to the neighbors and find out what their concern is. I don't like to be here for three hours and I'm sure you guys, but it's your job. But help us out, you know, we, we're frustrated, we lost our parking, we have no parking because they, they put a bike back that nobody uses, you know, wasted money. And they had a chance to make it right. I talked to Mark Sideris, I talked to people before it was built, I said, what's going on? This is not a bike lane, this is a car lane. And it's a, it's a struggle to get out in the morning. If you ever go down at 8:15 in the morning, try to see the people that are parked. I have to physically look to see before I can get in my car or open my door or to get my groceries out. That street used to be nice and wide, you know, and it didn't have the development. I bought Dad and God bless him, bought it in 73. There weren't no malls there, there was nothing. It was actually a pretty decent street, but now everything's getting added there and everything, everything's being thrown at, at that street.
Are you on the north side or the south side of Arsenal Street?
And right where Louise is on the.
South side.
South side.
South side.
Yeah, there's no houses.
And like I said, every time in the morning they try to take a left, I can't get in my, my car, I have to wait 10 minutes.
So, so the, typically we speak up at the microphone, but I just wanted to speak. That particular concern, this design is, is alleviating. As far as the community path, which is the, the bikeway that you spoke to, the last phase of that is opening up to Arsenal, to Fresh Pond in a short period of time. So there's going to be, it is a corridor for both bikers and walkers. And it, it's being, it's, I, I understand that, but from the perception of like the, the turn lanes into the site, that is, that is being improved with this redesign of this intersection so that you won't have that backup of traffic with the VHB situation. So I, I hand it, I, I just, I wanted to speak a few, a little bit to that, but if there's other comments.
So you know how to reach, we know how to reach this gentleman and?
Yeah, I can give him my card as well for off.
Okay, sorry it takes so long, but.
It's okay, you know, like I said, I don't plan on selling the house and I, I love Watertown. I grew up here and then I've lived here, I haven't moved. But the changes are just too many. At some point we need to slow down a little bit, you know? It takes 20 minutes to get out of Watertown, whether you were in B M or Auburn Street and now with these different lanes, I mean, just keep it simple like we used to.
So is there any other comment?
My name is Paula Halpin, I live at 86 Walnut Street. I'm a direct butter to this project. As a concerned citizen and direct butter to 85 Walnut Street, I have already spent countless hours reviewing documents, talking to my neighbors and wondering, when the bulldozers leave, will the quality of life on Walnut Street be diminished or improved? Will cars and trucks be streaming into the new consolidated driveway located directly outside my bedroom window, which I like to keep open in the summertime, at all hours of the day and night? Can the new driveway be designated a private way and then perchance not used as a major shortcut between Walnut and Arsenal Street? In addition to concerns about increased noise and traffic, my neighbors and I have asked repeatedly to Westbrook Partners regarding their willingness and commitment to provide overnight winter parking for us. Many details were discussed at the two community meetings on September 16th and October 30th that are not reflected in either the developer's summary or the staff reports. We discussed creating a plan for neighbors to park overnight. Discussed were ways to distribute permits for neighbors so that the company can keep track and control access. The developers spoke about the kind of lighting that would be used in the garage. They promised only perimeter and bollard lighting, no poles and no spillage. They were asked if they knew if the zoning department would allow this, they did not know. Noise was discussed in relation to HVAC or, and the other venting equipment, especially if it becomes a bio lab. Where would these be located? How would it be screened and how much noise would it create? Again, trucking and public access to use the driveway as a cut-through creating more congestion on Walnut and Arsenal Streets was a big concern. Where and when will our concerns be taken into consideration? How do we know that the community meetings weren't just a waste of our time? For instance, the ZBA staff report dated December 6th refers to overnight parking. I would draw your attention to the word suggested. I quote, "The petitioner has also suggested that, at a minimum, during the winter parking ban, a portion of the structured path will be made available to designated neighborhood residents to improve availability of parking options for the neighborhood during these periods." Why is this only a suggestion? Can we get a commitment? Your attention to these matters will help maintain the quality of our community. Thank you.
Are there other comments?
Yeah, I think we can respond to some of Paula's suggestions.
Sure.
If anyone wanted to do the overnight parking, I think we're, uh.
Yeah, we should get in, I believe that was a firm commitment that you made and I'm sure you represented enough.
The microphone?
Yeah, I can't hear you, sir, can you use it?
I think the interpretation of the word suggest, I, it's just a, it wasn't intended to mean that.
So we, we have committed however, whatever mechanism that is. And I think we suggested that through our transportation demand program that that's how it would be coordinated in terms of which streets, who's registering, all of that. So it's certainly a commitment and we, we heard that in the first meeting and we, we'd love for that. So that is a commitment. The lighting, I believe John spoke to, I think we can add any additional color that, that you need on that. But I think our comments at the community meeting were that we weren't certain on the height of the, the poles on the garage and we just wanted to clarify what was required. And we've worked with our lighting consultant to try and minimize that as much as possible. And then similar, earlier comments in terms of access and vehicle traffic, as I, I think, you know, we discussed in both meetings, having that access point, I think distributing the traffic, we think is significant, a significant add to be able to, to disperse traffic in both directions. And Steve completely understands your commentary. So I think by having the access points on both sides, it allows that equal dispersion. And we think with the light there, it will even improve that. So if, if I didn't answer anything, please let me know. So if I didn't answer anything, please let me know.
Yeah, let's make it quick though, it's getting late.
I just am curious, the garage is, the top floor isn't going to be built, so there'll be no lighting on that top floor?
No.
Until it is built. If it is built, will there be pole lighting? Yeah.
So yeah, I think there's two situations. One is.
Can you speak to that, sorry?
Go ahead.
It's going to be awkward to be speaking to you.
I have another question.
When the solar gets added, you know, there will be a physical structure above the garage, steel structure with the solar panels mounted to the top of it. So there will be downlights with shields that are mounted to the underside of that structure that will provide light for that upper level garage. Those will be on sensors.
The top parking lot will be roofed.
Yes, but they won't be, typically, there's, you know, in that permanent condition, it won't be poles. Typically, there's poles on top of the garage that, you know, are a little bit more visible. This will be the, you know, the solar canopy with lights kind of coming down that will have shields on them, and that they'll be on sensors.
Okay, all right. And I just have one other quick question. There's a, you're intending to put another traffic light at Louise Street where the new intersection will be?
That's correct.
Isn't there another traffic light just about twenty-five or thirty feet down from that? The one at the Arsenal Garage?
Yeah, it's not twenty-five or thirty feet, though.
It's pretty close.
It's a proper amount of spacing between them to create a grid. And when they're synchronized, then they work together. And then also, I just wanted to clarify, if there's an interim condition, there may be an interim condition lighting plan, because I heard you say that there would not be any lighting on the garage in the interim. But if they have the garage operational and they don't have the solar, because I know that you've asked questions about this in the past, I just, I want to be clear that there may be an interim condition that has lighting that's, but it would still have to comply with ordinance where it was full cutoff and shielded. So it can be, so it might be some type of lighting that would be.
So it would be pole lighting, probably?
In interim condition. So I wanted to make sure that that was.
Yes, ma'am, wait a minute. Oh, sir, are you speaking or are you leaving? No, you're speaking.
No, I've waited my time here for this. Chris Penland, and I am a Birch Road abutter. So I do appreciate and have been to the community meetings that things have adapted in response to this. And I think also to hear from Mr. Whitney tonight about the difference between considered and shall. And, you know, as a citizen and having been here for fifteen years through the development, to hear that there is a mechanism and a sentiment that we can get some of that committed to rather than considered. So with regard, and I think some of the confusion here about parking and lighting is something that we would appreciate the commitments that have been made and want to make sure that we're clear on those. So I just want to add my voice to the issue of lighting to make sure that we don't repeat the Athena situation where we have a lot of light spillage. So I do applaud the, and hope that the as-built is the solar canopy at a lower height with complete shrouded. We would be very happy with that. And did I understand correctly that the commitment is that no fixtures will be directly visible, like the lighting element will not be visible off-site? Is that the commitment?
That's a, that's a condition.
Okay.
And that's not just the top, because what, with like Athena's garage, there's actually lighting that is shrouded, but you can still see the light of. So there is light that shines inward that can reflect, that you might see some of that. But because of the system, it's like the Gables Garage where the lighting turns off and they go into a very dim mode when there isn't movement as well. So there's a combination of that.
Thank you.
We have a councillor in the House.
Thank you, my name's Lisa Felton, I'm District B Town Councillor. And I thank the residents for their participation in the community meetings. And I also thank the petitioner for having two community meetings and, again, presenting the evolution. And they did respond to a lot of our concerns. So I appreciate the extra work that staff and the petitioner has granted. I wonder if we could clarify a little bit, maybe from staff, about, I do have some concern about the timeframe, because we get into, so at least we could have maybe a better expectation of how long this takes to roll out and what impacts there may be, because there's a difference, people don't realize, between certificate of occupancy, you know, giving building permits. So I'm sure you have your estimated timeframe if everything goes really well in finding your tenants and construction. But I don't know if Gideon or the chair can.
I can't speak to timeframes. There's a construction management plan that would have to be submitted. And if there's temporary lighting that's being proposed for the garage, that would have to be included in that, that would be an expectation.
So, but just to be clear, there are temporary plans that could be done so the residents know for lighting, for other things that may have impacts. So until the certificate of occupancy that then would trigger the, you know, potential delay of solar panels. And am I understanding that correctly, so that there's a lot of?
It's just, there's one thing that's, they are proposing not to build a store of the garage.
Right.
And therefore, they are not building a solar canopy until they know if they have to build that store.
Right.
And therefore, they cannot put in final lighting on the top of the garage until they know that.
Final lighting.
So that's it. That's, the rest of it is just normal construction management.
Right, there may be some temporary measures that people might end up having questions about. So just so we know that. The, I do want to say that the residents greatly appreciate it, and I would be very concerned if we do end up with five levels on the garage. Not just for the height, there's still some shadow, based on the studies showing on the abutter at twenty-two, twenty-four, I believe, Birch Road, which is disappointing that any really abutter should have increased shadows. So I hope you get your lab space. I am concerned that, it seems like we have a lot of flexibility here between the conditions that say, don't say "shall," but say "please," could you? If you're able, whether it's a snow removal or.
Sorry, there's only one condition that I think said that, and it was about the community path. And it was a suggestion that they work with their.
Well, but it also says for screening gas meters. And so the execution on Gables and some of these other projects where gas meters do end up being outside and aren't screened is really unpleasant. So I think maybe we're learning from that. But, you know, things have gone from bollard lighting to pole lighting. And gas meters are supposed to be inside garages, and they're outside, and they're not screened. So I'm hoping that we can be more diligent about getting the best result. The main topic, though, I would say, is that, I appreciate you pointing out that they're going above and beyond on the lighting, which is really great. And I'm wondering, and I believe this is a question for staff again, the petitioner seemed very open to building adaptable garage construction versus, you know, your traditional preformed garage. And it definitely would give more value to their property and would also have flexible space. So then if you don't need it for the garage, or you could use it for other things. So I feel like on council and in other committees, we're talking about being, moving forward with these more progressive ideas, more environmentally friendly and requiring things. But it's not in our zoning yet. And so could you clarify me that they're meeting the zoning, and some things are doing going above and beyond? But other things, perhaps for flexible garage, it would require a variance that they don't want to do? I'm looking at you because of the zoning, and I know the planning board's often told they're not to discuss zoning, so that's why I'm looking at you, but.
Well, I just wanted to acknowledge that it's the board's hearing. So I feel like it's, I just don't want to be the center of it. I just want to make sure that.
That's fine, I'm addressing the chair, but I expect you will answer.
So if it's.
I mean, it's going to turn out that a parking garage these days will be precast concrete. They're not steel, they're not wood, they're not, you know? So that's what it'll be, and the question is how you design it. But I mean, those are the materials that have been used in parking garages for years and will continue to be, because of the long span, sixty-foot span.
Right.
That's how they work, you know?
So my question, though, is are we kind of mandating that? Because for years, all over the country, there, you know, flexible spaces. I know it requires a little more height than your ramped garages. But it seems like we're not getting where we, or even providing that option to petitioners if they want to do something like that, that they end up having to request a variance if they're going to go that route.
I'm sure they'll do something clever. But the interesting thing I want to point out about the garages is because they did the link building, right? You have some idea about lab space and garages and onsite parking and so forth. I've always thought that garage was way too small inherently. It should have just gone up a little bit and taken some of the cars off the ground. So, but anyway. So you're talking about how to make a garage more, you know? Flexible. Correct, in terms of the green and all that. So I just don't think that's our subject tonight, but it's a good idea.
Briefly.
Well, it's a.
How you enclose it and how you cover it and all those things. But the structure is probably.
Well, so in other words, you build a structure that can be used for more than just parking.
So just in summary briefly, this project, this site is maxing out its FAR. And it's maxing out other components for the type of use that they're proposing. So they would, even if they built a flexible garage, you would have to change multiple things within the ordinance. So an example of a flexible garage space that is built is at Arsenal Yards. The first level was designed with flat floors, and the ceilings are very tall, because there's also retail there. In this case, each floor would have to be substantially taller in order to accommodate it. And then the way that the ramping would be designed would have to be changed. So there were substantial changes that would impact the neighborhood more.
Well, so my question is just to clarify, because it's a special permit, we often say, oh, we can work that out at planning board and we can condition it. It's to clarify, what you said is that, Mr. Schreiber said that it, we would have to change the ordinance. That's what I, that's what I would want to hear.
In this example, there's multiple things you'd have to change in the ordinance, because this site allows an FAR of one point oh.
Right.
So you can't convert a garage into office space, period. Because it would be not, you would be violating the ordinance.
Right, so it goes back to the zoning ordinance.
But because we don't allow that anymore use of that site.
So that said, it sounds like our hands are kind of tied when it comes to parking. But the biggest concern really is the traffic and the congestion. Because it's a little silly to say there's going to be no traffic impacts, but then recognize we need to add a whole nother signal on Louise Street, one block away from Beachwood, you know, feet away from the development. And I don't, you know, again, it sounds like it goes to the zoning more than a question for the planning board. But the expectation we have for the community is that these things will be worked out with planning board and can be conditioned. Right? Because you're saying that they need to provide a certain amount of parking. But the one incentive for people to drive and bring more cars, so Watertown says, we're not going to add any more single occupancy vehicles, we're going to reduce them. But in fact, we build free parking, which only incentivizes people to drive. We don't even condition to say that they have to charge for the parking. So I'm putting that out there as a concern. And yes, there are residents on Arsenal Street, there are residents on Louise Street and Frank Street and Beacon Park. And we need to recognize that. And, you know, the traffic studies, we keep doing vehicle counts too, but we're not counting people trips and looking at their mode share. And I think there's a general acknowledgement that we're going to get a lot of commuting traffic. But if you read the staff report, you say, well, it's right next to the Gables, it's a perfect place because all the residents, and we heard that for Athena too. But we didn't get all the Athena employees to move in to Arsenal Street. So, you know, if it's so great because we're next to all these residents, then why do we need the parking either? So I need to be on the record so that you know, I feel like we're giving a mixed message. It's probably some of the mixed message to developers too. It sounds like council and maybe planning board and zoning board, planning department needs to work more on our ordinance and our zoning so we can have better expectations of the community of where we're headed in Watertown and how we're managing traffic. Because we have contradictory statements here, in particular around the traffic and our expectations. But I do want to thank the petitioners. I think there's a lot of exciting things about this project. I appreciate all the work they've done on the easement. I know that's an expensive proposition. And I remain concerned, because a lot of the conditions and the things are not worked out. It's to be worked out later with the staff, whether it's DPW or the community development and planning. The planning board isn't going to see any of this again. The execution of the park, what that programming is actually like beyond walking in a circle. So thank you for your time.
So I think to follow up on your point, though, Lisa, I think the, you know, if there's, if this is primarily lab space, we all win. Because there are fewer cars or fewer people, there's so forth. Because lab space, you know, takes fewer people. So if that's the way it goes, then there's an advantage to the community if that's the way it goes. Anyway.
I think we're also, to your point, which is a good one, about mixed messages. I think it's really that we're in a transitional period where, yes, cars are the norm, but it's phasing into a point where Watertown is pushing developers and pushing owners to consider and offer options, which we didn't have before, which will create fewer car trips. There are options on the table now with the management plan, with shuttle buses and so on, which we didn't have ten years ago, five years ago. And that's why I say this is a transitional period for Watertown. And it's going to have its bumps. And not everything we try works, as you well know. But there's a lot of effort right now into mitigating traffic, lessening traffic, and giving residents alternatives to their cars, which I think really puts us in a transitional phase that we can't pass judgment on yet. And we can't write zoning around yet either.
And I'd add to that also, like, this project seems to have a lot going for it. The park on Walnut Street, a lot of other things. I just feel like if we were to consider not approving this project on the basis of traffic, it's not going to be a popular thing to say, but we might as well declare a moratorium on development. Because it's, well, you know, we could, but I don't think that's what anyone in this room really wants. So if this project isn't good enough, despite the fact that it's adding traffic, I don't know where that leaves us, so something.
So we have a motion to move this forward.
Okay.
I bet we do.
We do. This is for the eighty-five Walnut. I can't lay my hands on the hundred Walnut, but.
Is it two separate ones?
Let me start with eighty-five. And I make a motion that the planning board recommend to the ZBA that a special permit with site plan review be granted based on the finding that the proposed project meets the criteria set forth under section nine point oh three C, nine point oh five B. The general purpose of the ordinance, you want all this in there?
Go ahead, yeah.
Okay. Outlined in section one of the Watertown zoning ordinance under five point oh one point three A two and five point oh one point five C and E for new construction of an office, lab and/or R and D, and allowing for, under section five oh five D, reduced side yard setback, four point eleven D for increased build to line, four point ten for increased height of building, penthouse and screening, six point oh one H and F for shadow, and reduced parking with the following conditions. That was for eighty-five Walnut. For one hundred Walnut, I recommend that the planning board recommend to the zoning board of appeals that the approved site plan be amended as was submitted in the control plans to reflect the access easement, reconfigured parking and walkways. the access easement, reconfigured parking and walkways with conditions as noted.
So is there a second to either those combined motion?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so there we are. So thank you all for staying.
I got the vote on the both separately.
Not quite a record.
I know. Sorry if you want.
I know, me too.
So yeah.